We'll begin recording.
All right, welcome everyone to the State Bar Board of Trustees. Full board agenda meeting. Going to call the meeting to order. Start things off, please, if I could have our secretary take the roll call.
Buenaventura.
President.
Chen.
President.
Cisneros.
Here.
Good, not present. User.
Present.
Shelby, not present, Soel. Soel.
President, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. Stallings.
Present.
Tony.
Present.
Treo.
Present.
You have a quorum.
All right, thank you. Before I move on to public comment, I would ask that everybody who is here who wishes, members of the public who wish to address the board, to please raise your hand at this time. So on Zoom, you can do that by virtual virtually raising your hand as the hand icon and should appear at the bottom center of your screen. So if you can, please raise your hand now if you wish to address the Board of Trustees. And then similarly, if you're participating by phone, you may virtually raise your hand by pressing star nine. And then that will raise your hand and alert staff that you are wishing to make public comment. So I will give the members of the public a little bit to to raise your hand and then Madam Secretary, if you could give me a count after about fifteen or so seconds.
We have ten members of the public who wish to address the board.
All right. Thank you, everyone, for your desire to join in the important work of the State Bar. Due to time restrictions, we cannot allow more than three minutes for each speaker. So please note the staff will have an onscreen countdown timer visible to all attendees during the duration of your public comment. The timer's three-minute countdown will begin as soon as you start your comment. The onscreen timer will flash throughout the final ten seconds. We have several individuals who have signed up ahead of time and thank you for signing up to give us an idea of how much how much time to allot to a public comment and to receiving your important insights. So I think we'll start out with those who signed up ahead of time. And Luis, if you could call on the first number.
I apologize, give me just one second. Okay, first, we have Peter Matura. Peter Matura, if you are in attendance, we will go ahead and promote you. I do not see Peter Matura in attendance, Chair Stallings.
All right.
Next, we have Benjamin Cone.
All right, welcome, Mr. Cone. Can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you. The Committee of Bar Examiners has recommended a version of the Testing Accommodations Rules Revision to Youth for Adoption that fails to bring the State Bar's procedures into compliance with federal law and rejects nearly unanimous opposition voiced by a diverse coalition of public commentators, including many civil rights and disability rights organizations, a co-author of the Americans with Disabilities Act, members of the California DFEH Testing Accommodations Best Practices Panel, the California Access to Justice Commission, and Assembly Member Mark Berman of the California Legislature. This board should reject that recommendation and instead circulate a corrected version of the proposal for hopefully one final round of public comment. Most importantly, the board should address the unlawful categorical exclusion of some accommodations as never offered by the State Bar and others is requiring attestations of exceptional need to request certain other accommodations. The timeframe of two months instead of two weeks for initial decisions on TA petitions, the unreasonable deadlines to appeal denials, and the absence of a hearing is part of the appeals process where appeals cannot be granted on the papers. The State Bar should choose the, and this board should choose the recommendations of the California Legislature over the CBE in part because it would, the legislature could codify appropriate procedures. And if they do not like what they see and are waiting to find, to see what the State Bar will do in good faith as part of this internal process, and if they do, that could be an unfunded mandate and it could reduce goodwill to get twenty twenty-five fee increases and other things the State Bar may be seeking from the legislature to help facilitate the changes compared to if you do it voluntarily. Additionally, the Ninth Circuit is also considering bright line holdings as to the lawfulness of certain aspects of current rules that are maintained in this proposal. And you could have to start all over, all over again if the Ninth Circuit en banc panel makes those bright line holdings as pressed for, including the two weeks timeframe that was pressed for an oral argument as to what federal law requires. And right after you've just claimed you've reformed the adequately. And then you could have to tell the California Supreme Court, actually, we need to change it all over again. So for those reasons, the board should correct the proposal now and put it back out. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Cone.
Next, we have Claire Solot.
All right, Miss Solot, your microphone should be activated.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
We can.
My comments today will focus on the public comment received by the State Bar about the portfolio bar exam and the importance of using facts and evidence to base your decisions. Specifically, I will address the public's position as well as finance issues. While at first glance, the State Bar summary indicates that opposition to the PBE is more robust than support. Page six shows the true story. Eighty-four percent of the public supports the PBE. This fact is so important, it deserves repeating. Eighty-four percent of the public support exploration of bar licensure alternatives. So why do the numbers indicate that there is more opposition than support? Because of the efforts of attorneys in private practice who have made it their goal that the bar exam remains the sole method of licensure in California. It is not a coincidence that eighty-seven percent of the attorneys who submitted public comment opposed the PBE and over eighty percent of California's attorneys work in the private sector. Most of the opposition is being led by attorneys who fear competition for clients and reduction in revenues for both their law firms as well as a private bar prep company. These efforts are not new. As leaders of the anti-exploration faction, they have been authoring letters and recruiting support for years. The claim that they want to protect the public is a red herring and is in direct conflict with what the public wants as well as the positions of legal aid organizations, law schools, several bar associations, and the California Access to Justice Commission. Those opposed to licensure alternatives have failed to provide evidence that supports their positions. It is unconscionable that attorneys are behaving in such a manner. While there are many false statements to address, the following is key. There is no evidence that bar exams are a better way to assess minimum competency or protect the public. To the contrary, it has been proven that supervised practice is in fact the best method of licensure. Other arguments made involve opposition to the potential cost. The State Bar staff believes that the PBE will be self-sustaining once fully operational. The estimated cost for the pilot is four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. As the leader of the Legal Service Funders Network, I am here today to again reiterate that civil legal aid funders are ready and willing to cover the pilot costs as we know that offering additional methods of licensure will dramatically increase access to justice to low and moderate income Californians. The PBE will also help diversify the legal profession as licensure alternatives nullify the socioeconomic and disability barriers that are associated with the bar exam. I urge this board to reaffirm the decision it made last year to recommend to the Supreme Court, the California Supreme Court, that a pilot for licensure be pursued and that your decisions be made based on evidence and facts and not the unsubstantiated opinion of private practice individuals who simply want to protect their turf.
Chair Stallings, your on mute.
Thank you, Miss Solot, Madam Secretary.
Next, we have phone number ending in nine seven nine three. However, I do not see this person in attendance. Next, we have Alex Chan.
All right, Mr. Chan, welcome.
Good afternoon, esteemed members of the board. This is Alex Chan, a member of the Blue Ribbon Commission and the current vice chair for the Committee of Bar Examiners. I'd like to comment on Agenda Item seven oh one for the PBE. Dr. Michael Cow, the current chair of the CBE, has given me the permission to also speak on its behalf. The current motion before the board recommends the adoption and implementation of the PBE pilot by twenty twenty-five. But the working group's proposal seeks to limit the PBE to only graduates of ABA in California accredited law schools and categorically exclude all thirteen unaccredited law schools that help make us a unique, diversified, and welcoming state to single parents, working professionals, and those with extenuating family circumstances who want to practice law. This unexplained exclusion, but this incentivizes future enrollment at these schools and put them out of business. Yet, the proposal is completely silent on this issue. Also, the PBE does not address the major DEI flaws I noted in the BRZ's final report to the court, including how to eliminate undue financial burden, employment harassment, and racial discrimination against applicants. Further, the most important component of the PBE is supervision by experienced attorneys. As you know, more than sixty bar associations and the members across California have already written their opposition to the PBE to both the board and the CBE. Without the support, the PBE is dead on arrival. Even if the pilot is for a small cohort, PBE will not scale absent the support. We cannot shoot arrows in the dark and hope for the best when the impact is so great for years to come that the proposal offers not a single fail-safe solution. If PBE fails, if PBE fails, all but guarantees that the public and the applicants will suffer irreparable harm. Also, Dr. Cow and I note that four of the five members of the working group are law school deans at different AB law schools, which are required under standard three sixteen to have seventy-five percent of the graduates who take the bar exam pass within two years of graduation. And under this rule, AB has already rescinded accreditation to at least two California law schools, University of Laverne in Ontario and Thomas Strefferson in San Diego. I have learned that for the past several bar administrations, three of these four schools have already gone well under the seventy-five percent bar passage threshold for both first timers and repeaters. And the fourth one either barely made it or also went under it. So there is an optic that the PBE is being put forth to help underperforming AB law schools retain their AB accreditation by eliminating the bar exam. Dr. Cow and I do not condone this. And lastly, the CBE was asked in September to consider only whether to authorize the exploration of the pilot. But here, the motion seeks to do a lot more, is seeks to fully deploy the pilot and by implication to override BRZ's recommendation for a modified bar exam. I asked the board also seek input from the BRZ and the CBE before voting on this motion. I've, I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chan. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Michael Sternberg.
All right, Mr. Sternberg, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, can you hear me?
Yes.
I am the father of Evan and Nathan Warnock, as the board knows, who were abducted in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-one from Nevada and have been unconstitutionally seized by the corrupt kidnapper and family judge Cindy Hendrickson at the Santa Clara County Superior Court. Judge Hendrickson was a part of the secret judge club that Susan Bassey has been exposing on davivanguard.org with public records she obtained from the courts. I've gone through those records and three of my judges have been found on the attendance rolls of the secret judge club, two of whom were practicing attorneys at the time, namely Cindy Hendrickson and Roberta Hayashi. I am exposing these judges, the bar, and the California secret courts on my YouTube at Father in Exile. The courts are secret because if one cannot afford a thousand dollars for a court reporter, then one has no appellate rights and no due process rights. The entire judiciary, including the Supreme Court, routinely refuses to follow fee waiver rules and refuses to explain why in violation of the government code. When judges and lawyers secretly collude and the bar obstructs and refuses to investigate, there are no remedies. Cameras must be in all courtrooms now. That includes the State Bar Court. Incidentally, Hendrickson, Judge Hendrickson recently issued an order admitting that she has denied me due process and vacating a past illegal order. I've been coming to these meetings for over a year to document misconduct. The bar knows that, and I want to talk today about an example of how the bar behaves when it knows that. Back in March, I sent a complaint against Magdalena Chatapadia, bar number two eight five nine oh six. I sent a certified letter to get around the bar's limited file size possibilities on the website. You guys signed forward on March twenty-first. The case assignment letter was issued April third to Ariana Lee as an investigator. On April thirteenth, I had a two-hour phone call with Ariana Lee where I told her about the YouTube channel and the fact that I attend these meetings. We had another phone call on four twenty-eight. She would agree, she agreed at these phone calls that she would ordered my court file from the Santa Clara County Family Court, but then she disappeared and rarely responded to emails. At some point, she sent me an email saying that she had been on vacation and that OCTC had just been reorganized. That was in July, I believe. On eight-ten, we had a phone call where she admitted she hadn't even ordered the court file yet. On nine thirteen, I got a letter saying that the investigation had been reassigned. On nine fifteen, I got a closeout letter on the investigation from Ariana. That was the investigator from whom the investigation had just been taken and reassigned to somebody else two days later. On ten-ten, I sent her an email dissecting her letter showing how she made up false facts. On October twentieth, David Igbobo, supervising attorney, taxpayer defrauder and obstructionist, his bar number is three one two seven one two, sent me an email saying he was reviewing my email, my email, dissecting the facts. And then on ten twenty-six, he made up numerous false facts in a closeout email, thus forcing me into the CRU. I'm out of time for now, but I will talk to the board tomorrow. This is how I have been treated despite coming to board meetings for a year.
All right, thank you for your comments, Mr. Sternberg. Madam Secretary. It looks like you're on mute.
Sorry about that. Next, we have a phone number ending in four eight three eight. However, I do not see this person in attendance. There are no additional advanced sign-ups, Chair Stallings, but there are members in the public with their hands raised.
All right, if we could start at the top of the list, please.
Sure. We have first speaker Tyler G.
All right, welcome.
I am a first-generation law student, a working parent of differently able children, a disabled veteran, a CBA graduate, and I've been a provisionally licensed lawyer since February fifth, twenty twenty-one. My path to legal practice has been intertwined with intense personal challenges while preparing for the bar exam. My middle son was diagnosed with autism and my family scrambled the wrap supports and services around him. On February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, Rare Diseases Day, my youngest Leo was born. Five months later, he was diagnosed with rare brain cancer, specifically a grapefruit-sized tumor. We spent three months living at Stanford Children's Hospital in Ronald McDonald House. On November first, Leo received life-giving surgery, removing the entire tumor. But my family's journey is far from over. Leo will endure abdominal ultrasounds every three months, brain scans every six months, and full-body MRI annually for the rest of his life. The PBE is not a dilution of legal standards, as some suggest. Rather, it is an acknowledgement of the diverse and often arduous paths many of us traverse in our legal journey. It recognizes the dedication and competence of those who have consistently demonstrated their legal acumen under challenging circumstances. The PBE is also an acknowledgement that the bar exam itself does not measure competency. My progression from law clerk in twenty eighteen earning twenty dollars an hour to salary junior associate and then to a position where I now earn significant salary plus bonuses was not a gift and I am not indentured to anyone. It was a result of relentless hard work during personal challenges that many others face. When I hear the PBE criticizes dumbing down the profession for those who simply do not want to work harder, I cannot help but reflect upon my own journey. The PBE is a necessary evolution in the legal education and licensure, reflecting the realities of today's diverse and multifaceted world. It is an opportunity for the legal profession to embrace and support those who have proven their mettle. In closing, I urge the board to recommend the PBE not just as a temporary measure but as a visionary step towards more inclusive, equitable, and realistic approach to legal practice. It is about opening doors, recognizing effort, and valuing the diverse experiences that enrich our profession. The fact that eighty-seven percent of lawyers oppose the PBE pilot program is the clearest example of why something must change. We have to move past this scarcity mindset and into one of abundance because we are the fifth-largest economy in the world and there is enough to go around. Our profession and many others are facing a Copernican paradigm shift and fear cannot answer the question of where do we go next. Only hope and opportunity and the courage to seize that opportunity can take us where we need to go. Thank you for your commitment to this cause and for recognizing the potential that programs like the PBE hold for the future of our legal community.
All right, thank you, Tyler G. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Kendra J. Mueller.
All right, Kendra Mueller, your microphone should be activated.
Good afternoon. My name is Kendra Mueller. I'm commenting on behalf of Disability Rights California. We are the statutorily mandated protection and advocacy group for California. I am commenting on Agenda Item seven oh one. As with many other specialized fields such as the medical practice, the practice of law requires supervisory intent and a hands-on approach to ensure competency. The PBE proposal provides this where the Blue Ribbon Commission failed to come to any real agreeance. We agree with the recommendation to pilot a PBE, obtain necessary data and research, and further expand it. Any reasonable individual affirmed by eighty-four percent of the public shows that hands-on legal work is extremely and a better way of determining whether you are a competent attorney and as well as a empirical evidence affirms this. The alternative pathway will show true strengths and readiness of an applicant on becoming licensed. That includes instead of just rote memorization, complete lack of real-life legal administration and interactions with clients and where law schools usually just emphasize the majority of their school being mastering a black leather law in a vacuum. Once you learn all of this, then the PBE will ensure that applicants actually give a comprehensive portfolio of real-life work, which ensures competency. I also want to comment briefly on Agenda Item seven oh three. For the majority of applicants for licensure, which will take the bar exam, this proposal starts to align with state and federal legal requirements for anti-discrimination disability law that has been in place for decades. But as previously noted by many civil rights organizations that have commented upon the subcommittee's discussions in the last year, it's shown that the proposal does still have legal gaps. So we, we do suggest, as was previously suggested, to amend and ensure those legal gaps are fixed. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kendra Mueller. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Chantel Johnson.
All right, Chantel Johnson, welcome. Your microphone should be activated.
Mr. Chair and trustee members, my comment is regarding Agenda Item seven oh one, the portfolio, the proposal for the PBE. Last year in twenty twenty-two, this was only a recommendation for the original POPs. As an original POP graduate and minority, I have eagerly waited for a program like this because the profession hasn't been very diverse, equitable, or inclusive. However, just as in twenty twenty-two, all recommended options in today's proposal is for the only remaining participants, therefore excluding original POP graduates who never got to participate in the program. This was the same exclusion at the last year's BOT meeting in November twenty twenty-two. The State Bar indicated in October twenty twenty-two that surveys were sent, but I never received a survey through a student portal or personally, so I never completed one. Similarly, I did not receive today's proposal for public comment either. For original POPs that didn't apply at all to the program and those that attempted to, including myself, were rejected for no fault of our own because of misrepresented info by the State Bar. Likewise, according to page twenty-one of the current proposal, it appears that more than forty percent of the expanded pathway students who did not participate also indicated they were not aware of the program due to notice failures by the State Bar. To remedy this in twenty twenty-two, the State Bar recommended reopening the program for those students to account for the State Bar's failure to adequately notify the participants. In fact, the board, it was quoted, the Board of Trustees said, "They believe strongly that fairness dictated that the program be reopened. But unlike the extended participants, there was no recommendation to reopen it for the original POPs." One year later, I am respectfully asking once again for the BOT to include recommendations to reopen the current pilot program for original POPs that never participated. Otherwise, what is the recourse for original POPs when we are being penalized through no fault of our own based on conflicting and incorrect information that was provided by the State Bar? Therefore, the State Bar should take responsibility for the original POPs like they did for the expanded pathway students to request that the Supreme Court allow POPs the same chance to participate in the program with the same equal opportunity. As the BOT appropriately stated in twenty twenty-two, they believed strongly that fairness dictated it. Original POPs are respectfully asking for the same fairness. Thank you, Mr. Chair and trustee members, for the opportunity to comment.
All right, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Paul Kramer.
All right, Mr. Kramer, welcome. Your microphone should be active.
I stopped on mute. Okay, I'm a current member and last year's chair of the Committee of Bar Examiners. It seems that the board is intent on pushing the portfolio bar exam forward to implementation, evidenced by the proposed direction to start planning for implementation and your earlier, earlier attempt to slip it into the extension of the provisionally licensed lawyer program, a suggestion that the Supreme Court did not take up. When the Blue Ribbon Commission could not move forward with a proposal, your board created a new group populated solely with its supporters to prepare the proposal that's before you today. On the Committee of Bar Examiners, I voted in favor of moving it forward for further investigation, even though I continue to harbor significant doubts that it can achieve the public protection goals that are so fundamental to the bar's mission. You're being asked to jump ahead and begin planning for implementation before we've even determined that it will work. If you were swimming in money, that wouldn't be so bad, although I would suggest you should reduce dues rather than spend it for this, but you certainly are not. And until we know whether this is going to be effective and meet our goals, philanthropic monies are better used elsewhere. Now, the staff report states a policy that a program should pay for itself once it is operational. I support that policy wholeheartedly. Unfortunately, that policy did not inform the recent admissions fee increases. In any event, if we try to run two parallel pathways to bar admission, the full per individual cost for each will significantly increase. And if you apply the policy, bar exam fees are going to go up even more than they, they will next year. I don't think anybody finds that to be a great result. I do, however, appreciate the proposal to include the full Committee of Bar Examiners, not just two members, in the refinement, deployment, and evaluation of the pilot experiment. Rather than pursue expansions of its programs such as this, it's time for your board to refocus on fundamentals such as getting control of costs, including personnel costs, not just searching for additional revenues and limiting the in-person board and committee meetings. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Kramer, for your past service and continued work in this field. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Gil Palace.
All right, Mr. Palace, your microphone should be activated now.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Hello, I'm a member of the Los Angeles County Bar Association Future of Lawering Committee. I'm speaking on Item seven zero one. This week, LACBA submitted letters that included sixty-one bar associations opposing the portfolio bar exam. This is a historic level of coordination by bar associations and represents the vast majority of the three hundred thousand practitioners in the state. I will read just a few of the sixty-one bar associations that oppose the PBE. County bar associations from Los Angeles, Sacramento, County bar associations from Los Angeles, Sacramento, Marin, Santa Barbara, Riverside, Orange County, Fresno, Santa Cruz, and many others. The California Association of Black Lawyers. The Black Women Lawyers Association. The Mexican-American Bar Association. The Asian Pacific American Bar Association. Women lawyer groups from across the state. LGBTQ plus bar associations from Northern and Southern California. The California Employment Lawyers Association. Consumer attorney groups. Planets groups, defense groups, and many, many more. A lot of these groups staunchly opposed to the PBE are the same ones that the PBE claims that it is designed to benefit. In addition to the sixty-one bar associations, seventy-one percent of public comments. And eighty-seven percent of attorney public comments oppose the PBE. I'll say that again, eighty-seven percent of attorneys in opposition. I don't think you can get eighty-seven percent of attorneys to agree that the sky is blue. But they do agree on opposing this. This is also after the state bars own Blue Ribbon Commission rejected the proposal at least three times. While earlier speakers implied the public might support the proposal, that is false. Very few non-attorneys are even aware of it or submitted public comments. Again, seventy-one percent of the public comments and eighty-seven percent of attorney public comments oppose the PBE. The state bar should not advance a proposal opposed by the vast majority of its members. This is particularly the case with the PBE, which requires practitioner buy-in in order to succeed. Instead, a fair compromise would be to put the state. For the state bar to put the proposal on hold for now. And gather data for a number of years from several states that implement similar programs. If positive data comes out of several other states after a number of years. The opinions of practitioners could change as well. A fair solution should also be found for the remaining PLLs, which may or may not include an exam. However, now now is not the time to implement an expensive pilot program. That is opposed by eighty-seven percent of state bar members. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mister Palace. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Sherlene Klage.
All right, Sherlene Klage, your.
Hi there. Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, I'm gonna go real quick. So I have two issues I wanted to cover. I agree with Benjamin Cohen one hundred percent. Please wait, do not adopt the new policies in their current recommended form. Please request input from undergraduate and law school students that are currently receiving testing accommodations. Many, if not most of them, are not aware of these recommendations. The subcommittee at the last meeting. Had a committee member state he conducted his own personal survey of law school deans, and he claimed that they did not recommend the same testing accommodations law school students receive for the bar exam. Or for for law school to be also the same as the bar exam. Those statements should have been stricken from the record as it was not accurate reflection. Of a previous survey conducted by the California Bar Examiners, it was inappropriate for him to make those assertions as well as intended. He that he may have been, his statements were biased. With those with the most severe disabilities requiring time and a half or double time or a private room are going to be punished. Once someone goes through the rigorous process of obtaining testing accommodations by the California Bar. Examiners, they should not be required. Um, to prove their disabilities again, if those are permanent, physical, or learning disabilities, because they are not going to improve. It will save staff time and resources to not require extensive additional documentation or information for all subsequent exams that those people take. Once their testing accommodations goes through the rigorous process. By the bar examiner's committee or the bar examiner staff, they should be valid, they should not expire in six months. Um, the second issue is, I I do agree that we need alternative pathways to become licensed attorneys in California. However, the portfolio is not necessarily the best option. There's too many unanswered questions. If somebody's working full-time, are they going to have to quit their job and work for minimum wage? Which attorneys are going to be allowed to mentor the law school graduates? Interns, um, what is going to be required to be submitted in the portfolio for grading? Who's going to do the grading? Are there going to be samples of this? We are not taught how to do any of these things. A demure, a brief, a memo, none of these things we are taught in law school. You're looking for paralegals, paralegals do that work. Law school is all about. It it's about theory and it's about applying the theory and case law and it's you using your critical thinking skills. Not how to format a frickin memo. I know that that's important, but those are things that you learn on the job. So if somebody's working full-time and they have a mortgage. Um, they're not going to be able to quit making fifty thousand dollars a year to work for twenty bucks an hour. In order to be able to do the portfolio. So while I. Commend the bar and the staff. That we do need alternative pathways, this should not be the only pathway. I think the provisional license program that was implemented, I think you should explore more on that. I'm in the process of getting my investigator's license to the state of California, a similar. Body, just like the California Bar Examiners, it's much smaller, of course. We have to have six thousand hours under a licensed private investigator unless we were in law enforcement. In order to qualify to take the exam and to become a licensed investigator. A licensed investigator can really screw somebody's life up if they wanted to.
All right, thank you, Ms. Klage, for your comments. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have, I do apologize if I mispronounced your name, Wensong Dumariere.
All right, your microphone should be active.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Perfect. Yes, my name is Wong Song Dumariere. And I would briefly like to comment on agenda item seven oh one, the proposal for the portfolio bar exam. Um, I am. Or will be a first-generation attorney and I am approaching three years as. A practicing provisionally licensed lawyer. I fully support the recommendation to submit the proposal for an alternative pathway to full licensure. Um, I just quickly wanted to address one item. And that's the requirement of the seven hundred to one thousand hours of legal work as it applies to current PLLs. I do not oppose the provision itself, however, the proposal is a little vague as to whether or not the hours completed. By current PLLs would be applied to meet this requirement. So I would simply like to suggest that the current practicing PLLs be allowed to apply hours worked. To meet this requirement. Um, and on a. Personal note for the proposal in general, I became an attorney or strive to become. An attorney after not only witnessing but experiencing the lack of access to justice. And lack of access to opportunity. How can we purport to promote justice when there is a lack of diversity and equity in our justice system? As an African-American woman, since I began practicing approximately three years ago, I've had numerous experiences. That are a direct result and a reflection. Of the lack of diversity in the legal field on. More occasions than I can even count. I have been standing in the halls of our justice system, wearing a suit. Just like my counterparts, carrying a briefcase, just as my colleagues. And I have been asked if I am the secretary or an assistant to one of the attorneys present. This is because individuals like me. Are not reflected in our current legal system. There are so many barriers. And so for this reason. And I know I'm limited to three minutes, so I will end it here, but for this reason, I fully support. The recommendation for an alternative pathway to licensure. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mister Marié. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Ray Hayden.
Sorry. Anyways, I just want to make a note for people who come up, uh, I don't need socks. Over Mister Hernandez, you got the timer there, it's a little bit blurry, but up in the top right-hand corner for anybody coming after whatever, it's nice and clear and it's got the color code around it and everything, it's real nice. Uh, I won't be taking three minutes. Uh, I fully agree with the idea of the PBE. Um, I was through the entire uh Blue Ribbon Commission, I saw what happened. I watched what happened, I was ashamed for what was going on on there because they pretty much squashed. Any opportunity for a non-exam alternative. PBE is a. May may have been a non-politically correct or acceptable way amongst uh parties and stuff like that, but something needs to happen. And everybody knows it. Um, I want to come up to the drop of the thing from fourteen forty to thirteen ninety. You will note that nothing's changed. You get the same number of people failing. And Gil Palace was on here just a little while ago, he has a site where. People can publish their uh their failed exams, but we have the known scores. And we can see how people are scoring and everything, and it's like, how are they, how are they not passing this exam? There is so much material available for all of us. It is mind-blowing that the failure rate can be held. Artificially low. There's no way in the world, I publish material that have helped people pass a bar exam and what, I still can't pass it? I don't buy it for a minute. Now, here's the other thing. Just like that funny show Suits, which is hilarious. But uh that my character in that show can memorize everything. I can't memorize everything, but I can sure as heck memorize every single multiple choice question to with a point where I can just fly through. All eight hundred and ten in a single day, getting a hundred percent right. And I know what the fact patterns are, I know why the right answers are right, and I know why the wrong answers are wrong. Unfortunately, I have to admit that there is only one possible right answer based on the selections. But it is what it is. Things need to change, things need to evolve. You have to do something. If you keep pulling it back and throwing it committee, nothing ever happens. Lastly, I keep submitting what I call my onboarding process to admission. It has quizzes and an exam, an exam for each subject. Nothing is ever left out, everything is included, and every passing score has to be a minimum of one hundred percent. Just like the exam I have to take for the FAA every two years for my commercial drone license. I have to score a hundred percent, ninety-nine percent is a failure. I get to wait fourteen weeks or whatever it is, or fourteen days, whatever, and then I get to retake it. So these are the kind of things, and I keep submitting it and you'll keep seeing it, onboarding process for admissions. I really say check it out. Have a great day. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mister Hayden. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Maria Dominguez.
All right, Ms. Dominguez, welcome. Right, your microphone should be active, but I think you're on mute.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees, Chair, my name is Maria Dominguez, I'm a California licensed attorney. I'm commenting on item seven hundred and one today. And want to reiterate my support for a portfolio-based examination, I submitted a letter on my behalf, my personal capacity. And also. Um, well, first, as I wrote in my letter, the alternative pathway working group uh findings show that the traditional. Bar exam is a barrier for aspiring lawyers, especially women and underrepresented. Persons like myself, a Latina, a Latina with disabilities. I took the California bar exam several times, and this experience set me back economically. And it also prevented me from joining the ranks of direly needed public interest attorneys in our state of California. I am proud to be among the California attorneys who are in support of this alternative. As someone who has dedicated her career to the public interest. I would like to highlight several letters of support. That were submitted during the last public comment period and now. Uh, who are members of the Minority Bar Coalition of the San Francisco Bay Area, which I co-chair. Those are the Alameda County Bar Association. The Alameda County Women Lawyers. The Asian American Bar Association of the Greater Bay Area. The Bar Association of the San Francisco. And Change Lawyers and and the East Bay La Raza Lawyers Association, the latter of whose Board of Directors I serve on. A previous speaker representing the uh Los Angeles County Bar Association. Noted that the Mexican-American Bar Association signed on to their October twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three letter. In opposition to the alternative pathway, uh, that is incorrect. Um, I want to point to your public comment record that the California La Raza Lawyers Association, also known as the La Raza. Lawyers Association of California submitted a letter of support on behalf of the two thousand-plus lawyers. Represented in our state. And that includes the members of the Mexican-American Bar Association, MABA. The East Bay La Raza, the San Francisco La Raza, the San Diego La Raza, the Santa Clara La Raza, the Orange County Hispanic Bar Association. The Cru Reynoso Bar Association in Sacramento, the Latina Lawyers Bar Association based in Los Angeles. And it is no coincidence that our. Like the Latino Latinx bar is united on this, given that Latinos have long been underrepresented in our legal profession. While we near forty percent of the Californians in our state, we only are barely only six percent represented in this profession. And so I want to um. Highlight and emphasize the points that have been made before about why this is. Uh, to the core of making sure that there's legal access in our state and public interest. And I uh recommend that you set this to the state so that they can make the next decision to our state Supreme Court. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Dominguez. All right, Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Rian Pacheco.
All right, Rian Pacheco, your microphone should be active now.
Thank you. Good morning, Board of Trustees, and thank you for the opportunity to comment today. Um, my name is Rian Pacheco, I'm with the Legal Aid Association of California. We are a statewide membership organization of over a hundred legal service services nonprofits. We are commenting in support of seven oh one, the proposal for the portfolio bar exam. We did submit a written comment, but I just want to address a couple of things. We recommend that the legal service providers and access to justice stakeholders serve on the program design committee and that the PBE be piloted. In IOTA-funded organizations. These one hundred and ten nonprofits already receive significant monitoring by the state bar staff. The organizations must have fiscal control, submit audits, and participate in monitoring visits. They they also share their organizational charts. Which will clearly show state bar staff who is supervising the alternative pathway attorneys. We were disappointed to see that the Blue Ribbon Commission did not include one member of the Legal Aid community. Missing an important and necessary perspective. We believe legal service providers are experts in understanding the legal needs of Californians. We folded in dozens of provisionally licensed lawyers in two thousand and twenty and understand deeply what types of supervision is needed in order to ensure. Client protection. Ms. Solat had said earlier, there is also interest from private philanthropy communities in supporting the alternative pathway. I alt nonprofits can receive private grants to fund these positions to ensure. That the alternative pathway attorneys are fully compensated during their period of supervised practice. Many of the voices you are hearing from the opposition side are private attorneys, perhaps unaware of the recruit, the recruitment and retention crisis the legal aid sector. Is experiencing. And how that impacts our ability to serve low-income Californians. We strongly believe that an alternative pathway to licensure. Can help bridge the justice gap in many ways. Not only will it allow for more people to see themselves as attorneys because fear of failing a bar exam has been deterrent for many. But it will lead to more appropriate representation of California in our legal profession. I know you're hearing a lot of skepticism and questions from folks, but that is what a pilot program is for. Thank you very much for your time.
All right, thank you, Miss Pacheco. Madam Secretary.
Next, we have Caroline Shining.
For shining, welcome.
Hello, thank you so much, and can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Actually, in San Francisco, working around all the the busy traffic. Um, so, um, thank you, um, members. Board, I am Caroline Shining, I'm a practicing attorney. I am a former member of the California State Bar Per professionals working group and the current chair. Of the Future of Lawering Committee for LA County Bar. But I'm speaking as an individual. Um, the um, there. Could be and may starting to be a uh an impression amongst attorneys that the state bar. Has uh has some kind of anti-attorney perspective in terms of. Down saying things about attorneys that were um. We are being uh protective of our profession by thinking through and trying to work around and think about. These kinds of options that are being discussed. And I would like to urge the board to really take a moment. And think about in two thousand and seventeen. When the board was split and California Lawyers Association split away. Uh, a good number of practicing attorneys were no longer afforded the ability to really take part. As members of the board. One of the things that I think would be truly beneficial to these efforts to really. Really to look deeply at access to justice. And determine how we can get more representation for Californians who need it. Is to really bring back and welcome in the bar associations and bar association leaders. Who I believe have shown over the last two or three years. An immense willingness and eager desire. Like myself, to take the time to listen to state bar platforms, to listen to what is inside the knowledge community. I think it behooves the trustees to find ways to create liaison positions. To increase the number of practitioners on boards. And even as I know some uh bar leader, uh, state bar leaders have done. Uh, engage in more town hall meetings with uh professionals. This program in particular. Relies upon the use and the involvement of practitioners. And that is a wise thing, and I think a lot of people who've looked at it and said, you know, what are the benefits of this? Uh, have really uh are praising and believe that the involvement of actual particip- uh, participators is terribly important and a good step in the right direction. So in closing, I would just urge the board. Reach out. Please. Bar association leaders are willing to commit the time. They're the people and we're the people who step up and say, we want to make this profession better for Californians. They're the people, and we're the people who step up and say, we want to make this profession better for Californians. So I urge the board to just put a pause on this and think through how we can engage more of the attorney stakeholders in this process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Shining, and thank you for your past service to the bar and for your continued concern. Madam Secretary.
Do not have any, um, other members of the public who wish to address the board.
All right. Thank you to all who commented, and I would note that item seven zero one is, uh, going to be discussed at approximately three thirty this afternoon to accommodate for uh, the board schedule. Uh, we're going to be sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee and have a full agenda. And we're going to be accommodating a trustee's scheduling issue, so expect to um, take up seven oh one around three thirty this afternoon. And then anybody who is tuning in for item seven zero four, that's the, uh, Jenny item. Uh, we anticipate due to scheduling issues, taking that up, uh, tomorrow morning, probably first thing in the morning. All right. Next, we'll go on to, um, item ten, which are our minutes. This is the approval of the September twenty-first or twenty-second open session minutes, and then our special board meeting on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, the open session minutes. Any, uh, members of the Board of Trustees like to note any corrections or modifications to these open session minutes? Yes, Mr. Tony.
Yeah, I, I just have one small adjustment I think would, would make sense. You know, I think these, my understanding is that our meetings, this is one two-day meeting as opposed to two one-day meeting. And that when we end the first day, um, I, I, I think we should probably call it a recess rather than adjournment. Right now it says adjourned, and the reason, there, there's actually a practical reason because we have public comment at the beginning of the meeting where we invite members of the public to speak. Um, it would provide clarity to people wishing to make public comment that the beginning of the me, of the board meeting is the time and that there isn't public comment on the second day because it's not a new meeting, but rather a continuation of the original session. So I, I, I'd like to offer that as a suggestion.
Point well taken. All right. Any other comments or corrections? If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
Second.
All right. First by Trustee Soell, second by Trustee Buena Ventura. Madam Secretary, can I have a roll call vote?
Buena Ventura.
Hi.
Chen.
Hi.
Cisneros.
Hi.
Good, not present. Huser.
Hi.
Shelby, not present. So well.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Trejo.
Hi.
Stallings.
Hi.
H I's zero N's minutes are adopted.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the Chair's report. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, COPRAC for your quick turnaround, uh, time on the artificial intelligence item. This is based upon a direction that, uh, you received from our immediate past chair, uh, Mr. Ruben Duran, and we just really want to commend you for the amount of time, effort, and, uh, coordination that it took to, uh, achieve such a quick turnaround time. So thank you to COPRAC. I am pleased to announce that the Governor's Office earlier this week appointed Patricia Barahona to the Board of Trustees. Teresa hails from, uh, Modesto, so it'll be nice to have another, uh, Central Valley resident on the board. I thank the Governor's Office for their continued support on, uh, rural issues. Patricia has been the chief executive officer at the Youth Leadership Institute since two thousand and nineteen. We look forward to Patricia joining this board in the near future. I would also like to announce the good news that the state bar San Francisco building closed this past week. I would especially like to recognize the excellent work of state bar staff, especially Steve Mazur and your team for helping us through this process. So it was a long road. And, uh, we thank you for your patience, dedication, and durability, uh, through this. That concludes my, uh, Chair's report. I'd like to move to the Executive Director's report.
All right. So I have, um, a couple of items just following up on that last piece. Also want to really recognize and appreciate both the staff team and the board's leadership through this a long deliberative process around sale of the San Francisco building. Those of you that have been on the board, uh, for some time know we've been talking about this for years, and it is really, um, something to see it finally come to fruition. So thanks to the board as well, uh, for steering us to this result. Um, I do want to, um, make the comment that, you know, we've already gotten some questions about the building sale, um, and sort of the undertone of the comments is, you know, now that we sold the building, maybe all of our financial uh, problems are over. Um, and you know as well as I do that that is not the case, unfortunately. But the building sale does afford us really important one-time funds that will help us get through twenty twenty-four. Uh, but the challenge remains ahead for us vis a vis a fee increase for twenty twenty-five. So just wanted to reiterate that mostly for the public at this, at this meeting. Lastly, attached to, uh, my ED's report, you have a written update on our progress on the strategic plan. Just a reminder to the board that after you adopted the twenty-two to twenty-seven strategic plan, we went back as a staff team and developed complimentary operational plans. Uh, the strategic plan update that you, that is posted, uh, shows you our progress on achieving the many initiatives outlined in those operational plans. And you can see that we are delayed in several. I, I want to highlight and recognize our progress, but we are delayed. And frankly, that's a combination of being over ambitious and also resource challenges that, that we've had here at the bar. So my plan is subsequent to the board's January planning session where you will revisit, um, the strategic plan and sort of immediate, uh, focus priorities for the board. We will in turn revise the operational plan to be consistent with the priorities that you set and to better reflect kind of the realities of what we are able to do. So happy to take any questions or really just wanted to alert each of the five that this is posted.
All right. Did any members of the Board of Trustees have questions for, uh, Ms. Wilson at this point? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to item fifty. This is our consent agenda. I would like to note that item fifty dash eight, which is the proposed amendments to California Rule of Court nine point eight point one, um, has been withdrawn. And then we've also received advance notice that fifty dash ten, uh, will be also pulled from consent. Are there any other members who wish to pull an item off of the consent calendar? All right. Seeing none, um, if I could have a motion to approve the consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. First by, uh, Trustee Huser, second by, I believe, Trustee Buena Ventura. All right. Madam Secretary, if I could have the role.
Buena Ventura.
Hi.
Chen.
Hi.
Cisneros.
Hi.
Good. Not present. Huser.
Hi.
Shelby, not present. So well.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Trejo.
So just to, uh, I have to recuse myself on this portion.
Trustee Trejo, if I could make offer a clarification only as to item fifty dash seven, you can vote.
Correct. Yes. Correct. I'm sorry. Yes, but I vote yes.
All right. So the record will reflect, reflecting that Trustee Trejo is recusing himself on item fifty dash seven. But then yes, as to all of the other items, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you.
And Stallings.
Hi.
H I's zero N's motion carries.
All right. Thank you. Uh, I was just informed that a member of the public who wished to give a public comment but got dropped uh, from the meeting, um, is back. And we will be taking that public commenter out of order. So Madam Secretary, are you able to identify that individual? They should have their hand raised.
Yes, I do see Kareem Gangora with, um, his hand raised.
All right. If we could promote them. All right, Mr. Gangora, welcome.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Chair Stallings. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Kareem Gangora, um, and I am thankful for the work that you all have done, that staff and the work group has accomplished on this. I am a public member of the California State Bar Committee of Bar Examiners. I've been in that role since twenty eighteen, and so I really share in the passion of the state bar's commitment to access to justice as well as, uh, public protection. Um, I was one of the supporters of this initiative. I think a part of reaching our goals and achieving what we need in ours vast and very diverse state is thinking bold, thinking big, and being innovative. Um, in areas like mine, where I reside in Fontana, the Island Empire, we're in a vast, um, a region that's underrepresented. We lack a lot of resources. Um, we have disparities and access to justice, attorneys, judges. I mean, there are a plethora of issues, and so, um, I, I think the pathway in front of you that's been presented um, is, is a great opportunity to pilot and find some data. We've seen in the past when we did, uh, make initiatives, we saw, uh, people of color kind of, uh, get, get, get involved and, and have an opportunity to meet their, uh, goals. I mean, I know people personally who it has transformed their life um, and really created a new opportunity for them to empower their community and grow as well. And so I hope that you keep that in mind as you're considering, uh, the pathway, uh, to an alternative bar exam, uh, more specifically, the portfolio bar exam, uh, and identifying that some of these things might have challenges and they might come with it. But, but that's a part of, of policymaking and being innovative and thinking big and wanting the best for the future generations um, and our children's children. I'm a parent of three. And so my hope and intent is that we, we find these type of workforce apprenticeship kind of oriented opportunities to build alternative pathways to other students that don't have the money, don't have the resources uh, to, to go to school and spend an exorbitant amount of money. And so you're seeing a lot of disparity in my area and my region, and I'm sure it's shared across other regions throughout the state of California. Um, and so I'm just really hopeful, um, that you all will support this and, and move in this direction. I think it's very, uh, empowering and it will be very impactful. And I think, um, years from now, when you look back, you'll say job well done. And so I thank for the opportunity to speak, Chair. Thank you, uh, to the staff here that has worked really hard on it. Um, I wish you all the best. I know public service is not easy. These decisions are, are very big. Um, but, but we trust in you and we know you, you'll do what's best. So thank you, Mr. Chair, again for taking me out of order. I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Gangora, for your, uh, service to the state bar and, uh, to the public and appreciate your input. All right. Moving on to item sixty, this is the Board of Trustees sitting as the Regulation and Discipline Committee. And we'll move into, uh, the RAB agenda. We'll go to item, oh, yes, Mr. Tony.
Uh, I'm very sorry. I have a question of procedure.
Yes.
Is, um, um, for the items that were taken off the consent, do you plan to discuss them later in the agenda?
Yes, sorry. I should have noted that. They will be discussed later. So we'll go through at least um, our RAB agenda, and then I'll look at, uh, as far as scheduling, just when we're going to fit those in. All right. Sixty dash one is just a recommendation from Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct on regulation of use of generative AI by licensees. We have several presenters here. Welcome, Ms. Dirty.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon. Um, I'm going to go ahead and let, uh, Mr. Kruger, who is, uh, Chair of the Committee on Professional Responsibility and Conduct, kick us off.
Thank you very much, Erica. Uh, and thank you all for, uh, having us at your meeting. So we were asked, uh, on COPRAC to, um, I'm sorry, as soon as I was promoted, a fleet of motorcycles drove past. Uh, we were asked to, uh, provide guidance, recommendations, analysis, or opinion um, on the top, uh, topic of generative AI. We have focused, uh, our last several COPRAC meetings on this issue. Our working group includes, uh, people very familiar with computer sciences and its application in the law. Um, we've worked really hard to try to, uh, increase our understanding of current generative AI and its application to the law. We recognize its early days in the, um, this technology, um, being made publicly available and being used in the law. Um, what we have come up with in our guidance framework is, uh, we are working off the existing ethical framework of duties for attorneys and how it relates to, uh, how generative AI interfaces with the existing robust ethical regulatory framework for attorneys. So we don't believe we've gone out on a limb. We believe the guidance that we have crafted is useful for practitioners now and, um, non-controversial, but thought provoking. We know attorneys are already using AI, so we think it's important to get this out there now. And we're trying to be very clear about the fact that we view this as just a first step. You know, we don't know where the technology is going to go, where the uses are going to go. And we at COPRAC intend to continue examining, um, the technology, the ethical implications of it. And if we come to the conclusion that new rules, new ethical principles are required, um, you know, we'll, we'll make those recommendations. We, you know, this is not our, this is not our final word. This is our first step, and it was intended in that spirit. So I, I don't have much more to say, but we're happy to, Erica and I are happy to answer any questions. Erica, do you have more to say?
Um, yeah, thank you, Brandon. And so I'll just point out, uh, Brandon kind of covered the, um, what COPRAC did based on COPRAC's charge and what was directed to, uh, COPRAC, uh, by former Chair Duran. Um, in addition to that, um, as you are likely aware, COPRAC has a very limited charge and a very limited, um, role, and that is essentially, well, it is limited, but it is large. Let me say it that way. Um, and that is to address matters involving professional responsibility and to facilitate compliance by existing licensees with those ethical duties. Um, as the working group and the larger committee was looking at, um, generative AI and its current, um, uh, use functions as well as the potential uses, um, in the, uh, short term and certainly in the longer term. Um, the committee realized that there are many other, um, areas that need to be explored as it relates to generative AI. So as you'll see, uh, COPRAC prepared the practical guidance recommendations that they are seeking, um, publication of, uh, um, by this group. And they also recommend several other, um, activities that are presented in resolutions. And those include, um, asking the Office of Professional Competence, which is, um, the office that I am with to develop a, um, MCL program that is, um, going to be offered for credit in that new credit hour subject, which is on, um, legal technology and the practice of law, um, as well as update the new attorney training that all new licensees are required to, um, complete within their first year of practice to also address generative AI in some capacity. Um, the agenda item also asks for, um, the Committee of Bar Examiners and the Office of Admissions to explore, um, the use of generative AIs relates to, uh, law students and bar applicants. And then it also asks the, uh, Board of Trustees consider, um, either themselves or working with staff to engage the legislature and the California Supreme Court to explore what the use of generative AI means, uh, vis a vis the unauthorized practice of law.
All right. Thank you so much for that presentation. I know it belies a tremendous amount of work that you uh, have done and continue to do, and hopefully we will be in a position to put more work on your plate. And just kind of with that general thought of that this is the first step, not necessarily contemplating the entire universe of generative AI, uh, you know. Are there any questions or comments from the Board of Trustees about the work of a COPRAC and the recommendation? Um, and the, the work product before us?
Yeah, I have a question.
Yes, uh, Trustee Buena Ventura.
So I'm not all that familiar with the, the generative AI, but essentially, if, correct me if I'm wrong, is it a process wherein it, a computer like ChatGPT, for example, will generate a motion or a brief? Um, if the attorney so chooses to rely on that platform, is that essentially what we're trying to monitor, regulate, and have some control over?
Yes, it, it, that's one application and, and one that we are looking at that we have some concern for. There are lots of applications going from very simple, you know, perhaps a solo practice. very simple, you know, perhaps a solo practitioner, just, you know, inputting a bunch of facts and saying, write me a complaint. Right? From that to very sophisticated, high-level law firms that just use bespoke AI systems to monitor and pull information from their own databases, their own libraries of filings. And so the guidance that we tried to come up with, we wanted to be applicable to the whole range of practitioners. But that is the concern, and we wanted to talk about the ethical implications implications of an attorney doing just what you described, the confidentiality implications, the competence implications, and things of that nature.
I- i- is there a an explosion in the market of this this generative AI platforms where attorneys are now using them?
Yes, and and it's that my understanding is yes, and it goes from, you know, Thomson Reuters, Lexus, a whole bunch of other sophisticated legal services providers offering versions of AI all the way down to, again, solo practitioners just using the free ChatGPT with potential huge confidentiality implications and competence implications, just saying uploading a motion and saying, give me an opposition to this. And so it really runs the gamut, which is why our guidance is is pretty extensive.
Understood. Thank you.
Sure.
All right, trustee Sewell.
Thank you, Chair Stallings, and I just want to thank the the members of COPRAC as as well as our our staff team for bringing this item forward and 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 the work that went into developing the guidance document and have no no qualms or no concerns whatsoever with the recommendations that have been that are being put forward or what's in the the guidance manual. But I think I'm 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 seeking to add too. This area of generative AI is is something that is exploding right now, and it's something that is has is really, really taking government by storm in the sense of the legislature is 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 focused on it in terms of bills that were introduced this session and in terms of a number of bills that are going to be introduced next next session. The governor in in September issued an executive order on on generative AI. President Biden subsequently in October has issued an executive order on AI, and it's all about its 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 benefits, its risks, its impact, its its the the equity implications, et cetera. And so a a couple of questions, and some of this may be more directed to the larger issue of us as a as a board, thinking about its implications is is one. I I noted that in the the recent bar all-staff meeting, that there was some discussion about AI and some of the AI platforms that are out there. And one one thought I have is that as a board, we should also get some familiarity with 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 what's out there. I don't know if that is an item that we should get agendized in some fashion, or maybe we could have a similar presentation that was done at the all-staff meeting made to made to to board members so that we have some sense of of use, risk, implications, et cetera. Clearly, this raises concerns about our attorney discipline system and and what may or may not happen as a result of AI's usage in cases being brought brought forward that where AI has been a culprit or has been deemed a problem in in terms of what what's happened in terms of the disposition of a case has implications as it relates to bar staff jobs and what may or may not happen as we as we move forward in terms of employment opportunities, as well as the overall mission that the bar is is supposed to to deliver on. And so I guess a lot of that is more are more common, but but also want to make I do ask one question, and that is, the governor's executive order applies to all state agencies and state departments. And so and there are reporting requirements that are associated with with that. And so I'm wondering whether or not the the at least the initial COPRAC guidance manual as well as other supporting documentation may be a part of what it is that the that the bar intends to present in terms of compliance with the governor's executive order.
So my understanding is that the executive order does not apply to us. We are not an executive branch agency or a judicial branch agency. But as you know, I have been in contact, thanks to you, with the folks at GovOps that are working on effectuating the executive order. That is that is their understanding as well in terms of the application to the bar. But we have voluntarily been sharing information. I shared this agenda item with them in advance of today's meeting, as well as a host of other things that we've done, our own internal policies to provide guidance to our staff on how to use AI, because the state has not yet issued policies for state employees. So there's been collaboration and information sharing, but my understanding is that the actual executive order does not apply to to us as a judicial branch agency.
With the with the courts themselves, I'm just trying to understand the structure. I know we've done something. Do we know whether or not the the courts themselves are also looking at the looking at this issue?
Well, the courts themselves are are the fifty or fifty-eight county Courts of Independent Leadership. The Judicial Council does have some kind of working group together, as well as the California Judges Association. There are many, to my understanding, different working groups and task forces. I'm I'm not sure of kind of a monolithic response from the courts to date, but certainly can find out.
Thank you.
All right, yes.
Can I say something really quickly? Sorry.
Yes, trustee Trejo.
Forgive me. Thank you. Thank you so much for your presentation. Just want to make a quick comment. Because I was looking at some of the key guidance issues that were brought up. I couldn't help about how, as a consumer, I use AI, right? And I know that typically, before I use my own counsel, I like to kind of find out what boilerplate components might be available to me. I know that process now is super easy, right? And my 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 big issue, when I do something like that as a non-attorney, is it's enforceability. One is how enforceable is this document that I've just put together? And two, liability ultimately, right? Whether it's, you know, through some errors and omissions component or whatnot, but I think guidance is the way to go, right? I think that I I I do feel that as effective as AI is, at the end of the day, especially for for using it in this way, you're only as good as the inputs you put into it, right? And so I appreciate that we're, you know, we're always seem to be a step behind, but I think that we're trying to at least put this into, you know, give it some parameters of use. But I just want to say I appreciate that and just remember, it's about enforceability and liability for me in the way that I use it. So, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you, trustee Trejo. Trustee Tony.
Thank you, Chair Stallings. What I what I really appreciate about the practical guidance structure and the way it's put together is really looking at what the responsibilities of attorneys as professionals are, the duty of confidentiality, very clear, how does AI apply? Duties of competence and diligence, duty to comply with the law, duty to supervise lawyers and non-lawyers, responsibilities of subordinate lawyers, communication regarding generative AI use, and so on. I'm not going to read all of them, but 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 it's very clearly laid out. And for a non-attorney, it's also just very, I like the charging for work produced.
That was one thing we wanted to reemphasize.
Good, that's good. I I I'm letting you know I noted I noted it.
Good, great.
Through it, and that was important to me because that's a a question that's part of the protecting the public, right? And that you, in fact, had had covered that clearly. So, you know, I I I will speak for myself in saying that I am still learning about AI, trying to understand it. I read when there are articles on it, I read them, you know. Tim Wu, who was the former technology advisor for the Obama administration, had an op-ed in last Sunday's New York Times where he cautioned against moving, he, you know, he he both said, yes, there's need for government regulation and oversight, but he also cautioned on moving too fast. And, you know, so so I I I read stuff. And I I guess, you know, my view on this is I need a little bit more time to 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 really digest this. And, you know, it I I've said this before, and I'll say it again, I think it's a really good practice that boards try not to vote on things the same meeting it comes up. They, you know, we've only seen it the first time, and, you know, almost everything on our agenda is not brand new. It's issues we've discussed before, and in the absence of a urgency, sometimes there's urgency, obviously, time limits, deadlines we've got to meet. And and so I would, I'm just letting you all know, I would feel much more comfortable voting on this in January. I think that I'm glad we had the discussion today. And just give a little bit more thought about, is there any other questions or anything that that's left out? I would even suggest, like we've done with the vast majority of our other new policies, we've put them out to public comment. You know, we could put this out to public comment, like we have so many other, and see what do people think? Do you know, does this make sense? Are there things we're missing that we didn't think about that other people? So that that that's really my 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 sense of of where I would really like to see this go is put it out for public comment. And I think we can do so in such a way that we would be prepared to vote on it. You know, maybe there'll be something from public comment that will feel like we may may want to add or or tweak a little. So that 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 those are my thoughts.
I'm I'm happy to respond to that a little bit, if that's appropriate. And so we did do a little bit of public outreach at the outset. So this is just for context, for those of you that are not too familiar with COPRAC's work. This practical guidance is something that's very different from what COPRAC typically does. COPRAC, for better or for worse, often moves much more slowly and does so very in a thoughtful way. So most of COPRAC's work is advisory ethics opinions that go through a very long process. There's a very long deliberation at the at the working group level, and then at the full committee level, and ultimately leads to a draft opinion that is issued for public comment at the COPRAC level, comes back from public comment. To my knowledge, very rarely, if ever, that's it. It typically goes out for at least one other public comment period and then comes back. This is really useful for these types of opinions because they do allow for people to identify new issues. You know, convince COPRAC in some instances to change their mind or tweak their opinion on something and revise it, which is all very beneficial. The difference here is a few different things to my mind. One, we did do the public comment in some ways at the outset. So a thought exchange was circulated to all licensees through one of the all licensee emails that goes out, asking for every lawyer in California to provide input on the issues related to lawyer use of generative AI. We received some comments on it, less than we would have hoped, but we did receive some comments. Those were shared with the committee. They were shared in much more detail with the working group. And what came out of it was that essentially the issues that are addressed in the practical guidance document were those issues that were spotted as well by those licensees. Now, going back to the difference between a traditional COPRAC ethics opinion and what this is, is this is just guidance. So this is not kind of the more detailed analysis that COPRAC opinions typically have, where they're taking a particular fact pattern and the relevant rules, statutes, and laws, and oftentimes ethics opinions as well, and applying them to that. This is more of an issue spotting. And the reason that COPRAC thought that made sense right now is because lawyers are already using this, and some may be doing so at their own peril. And so the committee wanted to do something quickly, not only because the Board of Trustees asked them to, but also because it's already being used. And it's really important for lawyers to understand as you've probably seen, all of the benefits of such use, but also some of the risks, and so that they are using it in a way that is client protective, as well as, you know, fully satisfying their competence obligation and actually, you know, reviewing and editing outputs to make to improve them and to make sure that they are something that is drafted for the most beneficial use of them of them on behalf of their clients. And as you may have seen as well, there are already instances where lawyers have not been using it properly that are coming out in in cases and otherwise. And so the goal of this, I think, as Brandon stated, is it's an initial starting point. You know, it's kind of really to get the conversation going amongst California licensees and others. This would be, to my knowledge, the very first AI item that is specifically approved by a regulatory agency for lawyers. Florida is considering one, but it has not been formally adopted yet. And so it would really be the first of its kind. The benefit of that is that there is guidance available for lawyers as of right now. The downside of that is that this is an evolving technology, and so it's going to need to be continually updated. And I think that's COPRAC's dedicated to exploring the necessary updates and bringing those back to the Board at a future date.
All right, thank you. Yes, trustee Sewell.
Mr. Chair, I'll I'll defer to trustee Chin since I've already spoken. I did do have a follow-up, though.
Trustee Chen.
Hey, thank you. I apologize. I have to drop right after this to catch a flight. But I just wanted to respond to some of the concerns that trustee Tony raised and also to thank COPRAC and Ms. Dordi for the great work on this guidance, which I think is very sensible. We, at my law firm of about 200 lawyers, are already beginning to explore the use of generative AI. I do think this guidance is needed, and it's needed now. I think it's very sensible in that it spots issues, and rather than having a prescriptive approach, given how quickly AI is changing, it it tells lawyers to reference these distinct ethical obligations. And so I think it's a very sensible approach. I do think it's needed now. I mean, I will note that you know, the recent graduates from law school who took the bar exam this summer, many of them finished law school at a time when generative AI was being used for bar exams. So we have a new generation of lawyers that is already using generative AI and had used it in law school. So I think it's important to have guidance that is put out now. I think the guidance as it is drafted is sensible in that it is really flexible and simply spots issues and points people to the relevant ethical obligations. So I'd be in favor of adopting it now.
All right, thank you, trustee Sewell.
I did have one question that I I just forgot to ask, and that was the recommendation is also for us to continue to explore the unauthorized practice of law. And well, somebody just remind me, that is non-lawyers that would be law non-lawyers using generative AI legal legal tools, or is that somehow, or is that the misuse of generative AI by those that might be practicing in some fashion?
It I'll I'll speak to that. It is generative AI practicing law is what we are talking about in this instance. And that is something that is very possible, and it could be of great benefit as far as some access issues, but also as I believe trustee Trejo was describing, you know, it it could be something where the outputs create information that if you don't know, you don't know what you don't know, right? And so depending upon what it looks like, it could be a hallucination, which is false information that's presented as true in a way that is so convincing that someone could utilize that to their disadvantage.
All right, trustee Huser.
I just wanted to reiterate what trustee Chan was saying. Generative AI is in very active use. As someone in the technology industry, I can tell you companies are are strongly using it and all-otid lawyers. and all O'Tide lawyers and um people who, you know, sue technology companies are actively using it. I do like the guidance and it's, you know, kind of directional guidance as opposed to, you know, specific um rules that must be applied because this is moving so quickly. So I do think it is important to um, you know, do something now rather than wait.
All right, thank you, trustee Huser. Now, Erica, I understand that you may have an additional portion of the presentation.
Uh, yes, my understanding before um attending the meeting is that there were going to be maybe some questions as related to how um Co-Prax's uh item compared with Biden's executive order. And um if you'll indulge me, I will show you um an interesting way using generative AI to explore that. Um, so this is Claude, this is one of many AI products that currently exists. This is a free product. Um, I, you know, gave them some email access information, but I would never put any confidential information into this because um it would not be um secure. So all I did, as you'll see, is I'm attaching two documents. Uh, please tell me where there are similarities between them and differences. As you'll see, I attached Biden's AI order and I have posted, um, attached the posted board item, the Co-Prax item that you um had before you today. I'm doing this live so you can just see how quickly it does it. Just so you know, this takes much longer for this than it did for most other documents. Um, Biden's uh AI order is a seventy-three page PDF. And uh Co-Prax item is just a few pages, but it's having to compare all of them together. Um, what I can do, if you'd like, in the interest of time, is go ahead and show you the results. Um, but I don't actually think it's going to take that long. There we go. And so here it is, it's popping out every single thing.
That's awesome.
Now, I'll just say um to our near question or the concerns about taking jobs. I mean, as we've been using this more and more internally, I don't think that's the case at all because part of this is whole prompt engineering, what do you ask and how do you ask it? That's very important. And then you take this and you can't just, you know, cut and paste this as your answer, but it really helps you get started. You know, you're halfway there and that is um, I, I think the power of these tools is just incredible. So uh trustee Tony, I had shared with Erica a little bit of our conversation about Biden's order, so she teed that up. But obviously, we do the same thing with the uh governor news sums order. And it really does help you, things like that, to show where there are um blind spots or, or missing areas. So I thought it would be cool to show live.
Very cool.
There's one other question is, so was what out there, since Claude is free, is everything out there that the folks are using free at this, at this point in time?
No, there's a whole range, I'm so sorry. Zoom error, I was just gonna say there's a whole range, there's free uh products that can be used that may have no confidentiality um protections at all. To, you know, uh bespoke programs designed by engineers for specific law firms to, you know, Thomson Reuters, Lexis, other products that you pay for, all with varying capabilities and protections.
And there's free and then paid versions of some of the same platforms like ChatGPT. And I think Claude, I, I haven't figured out how to access the paid version of Claude. Claude is one of our internal favorites right now.
Another question on everybody's mind is, can we use AI to reduce the uh time for these Board of Trustees meetings? But we're not going to answer that today. Excellent presentation, thank you so much uh for, again, to Co-Prax for taking this on on such a short notice. Um, I do share in the majority of the trustees' comments and um, what I believe to be an immediacy um that this agenda item helps to address and is really just that first step in moving forward. And I think certainly we can return after we've all had a chance to digest this, uh returned at our next meeting. And so I'll talk with Leah about, about having an additional agenda item just on what we've learned since um, since today's date about AI, about the effects, if any, of this guidance and then appropriate steps to take. Um, and I know that this will be a continuing conversation at all levels of our organization. All right, um, unless there's any further comments or questions, may I have a motion?
Chair Stallings, there we go.
Oh, there we go. Give everybody a second to review the resolution.
All right, I just want to thank everybody for this great work and I'll make the motion.
One second.
Thank you, first by Vice Chair Sisneros, second by trustee Chin. Madam Secretary, may I have a roll call vote?
One eventura.
Aye.
Chen.
Aye.
Sisneros.
Aye.
Good, not present, Huser.
Aye.
Shelby, not present, Soel.
Aye.
Tony.
Nay.
Trejo.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
Nine eyes, oh, I'm sorry. Seven eyes, one no motion carries.
All right, thank you so much again for everybody's work on this. All right, moving on to item sixty dash two, this is our discipline system statistical reporting overview. And we're joined by Yuen Sheng, thank you so much for being here today.
Thank you, good afternoon, so I'm gonna share my screen. One second. Many open windows, give me one second, sorry about that. Can you see the slides?
No.
No, okay.
Yuen, I can share the slides, just let me know when you'd like me to advance.
Okay, I'm gonna try one more time.
Well, afraid it'll happen in that, oh, okay.
Okay. All right, so this presentation will provide an overview of the state bars reporting on the discipline system data. So the board has received several types of reports in the past year. We have not yet provided the framework of different reports. So those, this item will uh explain the different purposes, audiences of those reports with different uh reporting frequencies. This framework will include, uh include reports. Uh, the reports include a quarterly data dashboards, the biannual case processing metrics report and the annual discipline report. And they complement each other to uh provide the uh framework for the board to understand the different purposes and audiences of those reports. The first one, quarterly dashboards. Um, the board has reviewed the quarterly dashboards with the chief trial counsel and the special deputy trial counsel in the past year. And you have reviewed a list of uh um metrics in the quarterly dashboards. Uh, another, another biannual dashboard complaint review unit will be coming soon. It will be presented by the Office of General Counsel to the board in March twenty twenty four. Then we have this uh re uh newly created biannual state bar case processing metrics report. Uh, in this report, which is the attachment B to this agenda item, we uh provide the results of the twenty-two case processing metrics. Uh, those twenty-two case processing metrics were reviewed and discussed by the board uh in the previous board meeting. This report uh different from the quarterly dashboards. It goes beyond uh OCTC, SDTC and the crew unit in the Office of General Counsel. It also uh reports the metrics of the state bar court and the uh organization-wide, the state bar metric, which includes the recipient rate. If you look at the attachment B, you can see uh we look at the uh results of those ma- metrics from January to June uh twenty twenty-three. And I can share some hi- highlights of the findings. Uh, one highlight is uh OCTC from January to June slightly in, uh slightly decreased their average case processing time, which is the desired direction we want to see. Um, but neither OCTC nor SDTC have met their targets, the targeted uh case processing time. Um, SBC, uh State Bar Court, uh their average case processing time has uh slightly increased. Uh, but they are, um ninety percent of their cases have met their set um, uh, uh, case processing timelines for uh review and hearing and review stage. So they met their targets, but their average times slightly increased. Uh, for the crew unit, uh, uh, from January to June, they have achieved over one hundred percent case clearance rate, which was a significant improvement compared to the previous year. Then for the uh discipline outcomes, uh the number of findings remained consistent. Uh, the number of stipulations and the criminal um conviction thresholds has increased, which is again, the desired uh direction we, we would like to see. Do you have, if you have any questions about this metric report, please let me know. Then the last one is the annual discipline report. The board just reviewed the report of uh physically here twenty twenty-three um in October. And uh this is a report that uh required, which is required by statutory and the, the main audience is the governor's office, the legislature and the California Supreme Court. So again, the reason we want walk you through uh this two, uh three types of reports because well, the quarterly dashboards, they contain the most comprehensive um, uh list of metrics. If you look at the attachment A, you can see they have a much longer list of metrics in the quarterly dashboards. The reason is that we would like the board to um be able to track the performance of the main discipline units and to provide timely feedback through those quarterly dashboards. Then the biannual, uh biannual case process uh metric report, it's, it's the only holistic view of all the key functions on the discipline side. So it goes beyond OCTC, SDTC, crew. It looks at the state bar as a whole um in terms of our disciplinary function. Then the ADR, again, you, you know, ADR is uh statute really required. Uh, it mainly focused on OCTC, uh touched a little bit uh SBC side and a little bit uh finance side. So those three uh types of reports hopefully will give uh the board uh some understanding of what kind of uh data reporting we provide throughout the year. And uh let me know if you have any questions.
Right, any questions from the board?
I, I'd like to make a comment.
Yes.
Um, uh trustee Sisneros and I um serve on the Discipline Liaison Committee and meet quarterly with George Cardona, the Chief Trial Counsel. So, you know, we, we go over these reports uh very carefully. And I think that um in our conversations, I, I think we have an understanding that the most important metric of them all is the backlog number. And that that's the number that the legislature, the judiciary committees and their, their, their chairs and, and their staff are, are really focused on. And part of what um has been done is, um, George Cardona has implemented a lot of reforms, uh staff restructuring um to, to gain more efficiencies, ju- ju- just a number of very concrete changes, which um I think we're both very supportive of. And um, the, the view really is that twenty twenty-three is, you, you know, what we see as peak uh, peak uh backlog year. And uh where, you know, some of the changes that, that he has made um take a few months to actually take effect. So um we should start to see some of the results of the increased efficiencies in, in twenty twenty-four and, and beyond. So that was the only comment I wanted to add.
I think you, trustee Tony, any other comments or questions? All right, seeing none, Yuxiang, thank you so much for your presentation and for your work in this area to keep us up to date on all the numbers that, that really matter. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, I want to go to our next agenda item. And just for the uh board's benefit, plan on taking a bio break at about two thirty. So um, there is a short end in sight. All right, Mr. Cardona.
All right, thanks. Um, so following up on the comments from Mr. Tony, yeah, we're gonna go through our uh quarterly dashboard for the uh third quarter of twenty twenty-three. Um, our last presentation, I'm gonna go to the next slide, July meeting was on the statistics order two. Um, so I'm gonna go through this and try and highlight um some of the things that have changed in the dashboard because the dashboard is evolving and we modified some of the targets in response to some of the comments at the last few meetings and then um highlight some of the things that we're working on trying to improve in twenty-four. So if you can go to the next slide. Um, these are our uh key performance indicators for the third quarter. Um, and I want to draw your attention, two of the numbers, the two big numbers in red on the left, um, the case inventory and the caseload clearance rate. Um, the caseload clearance rate is basically the ratio of cases closed to cases opened within the quarter. And so you can see, um, we have modified the target for that, if we can go to the next slide. We've modified the target to that from one hundred percent to one hundred and twenty percent as our target um with the goal of having that target so that we actually bring our inventory down over time. A hundred percent case clo- case clearance rate, caseload clearance rate would mean that we're closing one case for every case that comes in, which would mean that our inventory would stay approximately the same. Um, the case inventory is too high. Um, and in particular, as we'll see when we get to the backlog numbers, the number of cases that are open that are already in backlog is in particular too high. And so our goal over the next year is to try and focus on working that down and bringing our caseload clearance rate up. So those are the two numbers we're going to be focusing on over the next year, uh trying to get that one up and the case inventory down. Um, turning to some of the other numbers here, um, if we can go to the next slide. Um, this was what I went through the last time as to how our targets were set for the average days spent in investigation. Um, this is based on aspirational numbers. In other words, the numbers that we are using to set these targets are based on the SB two eleven case processing standards. Um, as we move towards those and towards something to adopt those, um, and this will be the subject of a staffing study um over the next several months in preparation for the April twenty twenty-four reports to try and understand um what staffing is actually needed to get to these targets, targets that align with the SB two eleven case processing standards. Nevertheless, we are going to try and move our numbers towards those um and see what we can do again in twenty twenty-four as we start to try and see um if we can bring those down. Um, if we can move to the next. Uh, this is one that we've adjusted from our comments at the last time to incorporate the fact that large numbers of our cases close an intake. Um, so you can see that the target for the non-complex cases is based on um significant numbers of cases closing an intake versus a much smaller number closing an investigation um to arrive at a blended target of sixty days for that. Um, to arrive at a blended target of sixty days for that. And two hundred and thirty-three days for the complex cases. Again, those are aspirational goals that are based on the SB two eleven case standards, but we'll try and move towards those. Uh, next slide, um our percentage of. So that we have a measure of that. You can see that for our non-complex cases, um ninety percent of our are closing. Um, before the hundred and eighty days, um our complex cases were only at seventy percent, so that's simple. Going to the next slide. Um, this is the number I was referencing before, um the number of concern here, particular concern is the number on the right. Uh, the percent of open cases in backlog, and as you can see, this is a trend that also showed up when we looked at the ADR. Um, this is the one that you are going to focus on the most. There's a trend of an increasing inventory of open cases that have already passed into backlog. Um, we're taking a number of measures to increase efficiency. We're also trying to focus on identifying older cases that have sat for periods of time for unknown reasons and trying to get through those. Um, the goal will be to bring this number down. I should point out that as we bring down this number, uh the number on the left, the percentage of cases closed in backlog status, we may see. Increase in that, because as we close more of our open cases and that are already in backlog, it will mean that the number of cases that we have closed in backlog will increase. Um, nevertheless, I think this is an appropriate goal, since we need to bring down the open inventory if we ever have a hope of trying to get to a point where. Ninety percent of our cases are closed within backlog. So that's that, if we can go to the next slide. The next slide is again kind of a time pattern of our case closure rate over time. Uh, again, you can see the trend, which is not good, is that the case closure rate has gone down. Um, in part, that's driven by the number of incoming cases. If you look at the bottom, you can see that our number of incoming cases is back to the level that it was in twenty nineteen. Um, and that is in part what's driving this, but we need to get the case closure rate up in order to decrease our inventory. And again, the chart on the bottom right shows the inventory. Um, broken down by case age, and you can see that our inventory has been increasing. Cause our case closure rate has not been keeping uh track, so again, that's what we're going to focus on in twenty twenty-four. We can go to the next slide. Um, this is the duration of cases in each phase. Um, we have target numbers on the right, um those were calculated last time. I showed you how those were calculated and you have the slides that show how they're calculated, so I won't go through that again. Um, but you can see that the targets vary from stage to stage. Um, we are generally doing okay needing those for intake. Um, somewhat in investigation, when we get to the charging stage, we are well outside our target time. So that's going to be another area of focus, is trying to get our charging stage uh back down to closer to our target. Um, if we can go to the next slide. Again, this has gone over last time, I won't spend time on this, it's the target for the intake, if we can go to the next slide. The target for investigation, which we went through last time, if we can go to the next slide. Um, the target for the charging stage, which I also won't go to. Um, this quarterly, this keeps track of our number of filings, number of attorneys as to whom we have filed notices of disciplinary charges. Obtained stipulations to facts and discipline, you can think of a stipulation as essentially a plea agreement. That leads to a particular form of discipline by way of a stipulation. And then transmittals of criminal convictions, which is the way that we handle cases where we learn that an attorney has been convicted of a crime. Um, these numbers vary tremendously across time, um depending on what exactly we get as complaints. Um, what exactly we get as criminal convictions, in other words, this depends on. Uh, the quality of the types of complaints and criminal convictions that we get, whether those actually move forward to disciplinary charges. Stipulations or criminal convictions, um which is why you'll see more variation here. Um, if we can go to the next uh slide. This tracks the number of individuals who come in, um respondents with open complaints. To have fifteen or more prior complaints or forty or more prior complaints. We mentioned. Briefly, the target over use complaints as a quasi-measure of recidivism. The goal over time is to bring this number down so that we have fewer. Complaints against them. We will never get this down to zero because the number of complaints against an individual does not necessarily relate to. Um, the merit of those complaints, in other words, some could have fifteen completely unmeritorious complaints. And they would still show up in our fifteen plus complaints category. Um, nevertheless, this is something that we use internally um to impose higher standards. In other words, if we see someone with a large number of complaints, um that person is subjected to additional scrutiny in terms of our decisions. As to whether to move it forward to investigation and whether to close it simply because of the number of complaints. So if we could go to the next slide. These are the three quality measures that we look at, which is the percentage of number of cases that are reopened by this complaint review unit. Uh, the number of reopens recommended by the random audit and the number of Walker petitions denied. Um, all of these to me are within acceptable ranges, they're very close to the targets. And they don't seem to indicate that there's any significant issue with the quality of these based on these three measures. If we could go to the next slide. The next slide is the complaining witness survey, um as you can see from the graphs at the right. Um, this is consistently remained for access, which is a measure of how people feel. This is a voluntary survey that complainants fill out um when their cases are closed. Um, you can see that in terms of access, that is question is designed to see whether they have had access to the system that has been sufficient. Um, we consistently rate near the four level on a strail of one to four. Um, the higher number being better, um whereas on fairness, we consistently rate um in the um somewhere between two and three to three and a half level. Um, this has been consistent over time, um we will try and see if there's a way to bring up the fairness number. I don't think we will ever get to five, um who have their complaints closed. Um, tend to be unhappy um with the closure, um as you can see on the right-hand side. Uh, that unhappiness is worse when it's closed in intake. Um, there's a belief on many complainants that a case that is closed in intake has not been given sufficient scrutiny um and lower in investigation. But we will continue to work on that, um and finally, if we can go to the last slide. At the back of, oh, sorry, employee engagement overall turn rates. Um, this is just looking at OCTC's turnover rate as compared to the rest of the state bar. So you can see we had a big turnover um back in Q one of twenty twenty, Q two of twenty twenty-two. Uh, we now have moved away from it and our our retention um seems to be back on the level of the rest of the state bar. Finally, the last slide. Um, when you get the quarterly report, the quarterly dashboard, it does have a glossary at the end to define terms. Um, there's been a change in this, there've been an addition, which I've highlighted in pink here, or to um priority. Um, we've shifted over to try and use the terms that mesh with the SB two eleven case processing standards. Um, so we have our higher risk to public protection, our lower risk to public protection. We are no longer needing cases as P two, which was a previous designation, that's for expedited cases. We've now layered expedition on top of higher RPP or lower RPPs. So we can track all cases consistently using those two markers, which is consistent with what will be the SB two eleven case processing standards. So we've tried to make these statistics and our data mesh with what we will need when we go to the SB two eleven case processing standards. Um, so that's everything I had, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Right, thank you, George. Any questions or comments from the trustees? All right, George, I just wanted to ask a question, oh, sorry, uh trustee Drell, I'll get to you in just a sec. Have we been able to track any other, um, I guess, uh. Vacancy rates or turnover in other agents, similarly situated agencies in California, and how are we tracking with them? As far as our turnover and um and open positions.
I don't have the numbers on that, um, I, we could look at some of the other regulatory agencies and see. Um, I just, I don't have the numbers on that with me.
It's something that we've been um looking at as an organization, as we set organizational benchmarks for turnover rates. It's actually not so easy to to get, um, but we do have the SHRM um index. Which I think Society for Human Resources Management for other government employers. And I know that we are currently tracking well under that overall and including an OCTC. Um, but we have not sort of done like an individual organizational outreach to other regulatory agencies or. Um, DA's offices, for example, to take a look.
All right, uh trustee Trejo.
Thank you so much, George, your 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 work is always very so thoughtful, and I appreciate the uh the quant element as a quant myself. I I wanted to. So I have to ask again, I I think that there are many. From a policy perspective, we, you know, there's some restructuring that's been going on. And when the figures come out, and then when the numbers come out as 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 they have, I can't help but to ask. How impactful more staffing would be to bring those numbers down for you? Um, I think that this is one of those, one of those arenas that is particularly important to me, certainly. I I I just really think it's a way that our response time is is an important component of our mission in many ways. So I can't help but to ask, like. Is it, not simply, is it a, we need to staff this and we can staff it at some. Staffing function that will allow us to then think more along the lines of, oh, in. Three years, we'll be able to start meeting this one point two percent. You know, turnover rate that we're looking for, or you you know, I'm just, I'm I'm just, I'm just thinking aloud, but I'm, but the idea being that.
Yeah.
You you to to provide support if 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 support is what's needed, right? Because I think it's it's.
Yes.
Those are compelling numbers.
So I I certainly understand the question, um, so here's here's where we are. Um, uh, just to go back in in history a little bit. Um, when we went through the SB two eleven case processing standards and proposed the new case processing standards, a function of that was also to. Try and figure out if we could identify the staffing needs to meet those new case processing standards, which would towards having a faster response time. Um. We have, since then, as part of that, we also looked at our efficiencies overall. And as trustee Tony mentioned, we've made a number of changes over the last year to try and improve our efficiency. Um, including some streamlining of some of our procedures, um in terms of how we use in particular our electronic um file system. Um, as well as a reorganization to try and handle cases more efficiently. Um, in line with what was in the legislative analyst's offices report, which suggested. Um, that we should um try to see if we could handle some cases more horizontally. Um, that is differentiating, handling them uh more as bulk cases and some while retaining vertical handling of some cases. We've now reorganized in a way to try and do that. Um, we've been going through for the last three months and for the first third, for the third quarter of twenty twenty-three and the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three. Um, we've been going through kind of the. Um, residual effects of that reorganization, which I think has actually slowed this down a little to get the reorganization done. Our hope is that in the first quarter of twenty twenty-four, um we will start to see the impacts of that reorganization. And whether it has in fact increased efficiencies, which would then give us a basis for saying, okay, now we've made changes to try and make it efficient. We think they have improved the efficiencies, even with those efficiencies, here's where we are. And now here's what we can say in terms of the staffing that we need. And that in fact is proposed as part of what will go into the reports to go to the legislature in April of twenty twenty-four. Which will be some form of staffing study to try and come up with a recommendation for the legislature as to what we need if we want to. Attain the SB two eleven case processing standards, et cetera. Um, so I'm sorry, that's a long answer, but does that address your question?
No, I I appreciate uh that you were comprehensive with it, I think, and I and I get that you're gonna set this, you know, baseline come, you know. Yeah, this is, this is excellent, this is exactly what I was asking, thank you.
All right, great question. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. George, thank you so much for your presentation and for uh keeping us informed.
Thank you. I'm sticking around, so.
Yeah. All right, um, promise everybody a break at about two thirty, it's two thirty-eight. Um. If we came back at two forty-five, does that give everybody enough uh time for a bio break? All right, we'll see everybody back at two forty-five. And. All right, we're back in session on the board of trustees. Um, agenda, or excuse me, board of trustees sitting as the regulation and discipline committee. Uh, next up, we have item six zero dash four. This is discussion regarding rule two two oh one program performance met- metrics. We're uh joined here by our two two oh one administrator, Stacia Laguna, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, everyone, I'll share my screen for the presentation. You'll see our dashboard is similar to the one uh presented by Mr. Cardona. But it's a little bit different because our program is different in what we do. Um, for those who are not familiar, we handle the conflict cases where OCTC declares a conflict. So here you have our case inventory, you'll note it's much, much lower than um OCTCs. And given our low case inventory, uh our numbers are very sensitive on the average to outliers. So we'll get into that shortly. Our caseload clearance rate was um better than Q two, a positive number for us, it was one eighteen. So um showing that we're just uh reaching dispositions in more cases than are coming to us. For quality, these next two numbers, um there were no reopen for reasons other than new evidence. And we had our first random audit of special deputy counsel trial, trial counsel files. Um, and there were no recommendations to reopen those. Uh, this lower level, you'll see a bunch of red numbers, um. Here we have the average days spent in investigation, it's one ninety-nine for non-complex and four oh seven for complex. So we are shooting to bring down our inventory in um those older investigation cases. Here we have our average days to close, our goal is sixty for non-complex, and we're above that with ninety-four. And two thirty-three for complex, um. And we're not too far off, we're we're under that with two thirteen, however, it's displayed in red. Uh, because the previous quarter we were at two oh three. Percent of cases closed within the target, uh the majority of our cases are closed within the target range, however, we're shooting for that ninety percent mark. Next, we have the projected cases closed in backlog status. Um, last year, we had thirty cases closed in backlog status, this year, we're looking at a projection of twenty-seven, which is a good metric for us. Um, and it's a slight increase on the overall percentage, but that's because our inventory is overall lower. Open cases in backlog like OCTC, we we struggle with this. Um. We have fifty open cases in backlog compared to last year, it was thirty-two. And uh seventy-two percent of our cases are in backlog. This is percent of cases in backlog status represented over time. So you see, um, this is cases closed in backlog over time. Um, so you see, uh, a big number closed at the beginning of last year, and then we're. Generally between the ten and twenty percent mark since that time. Um, this is our percent of cases open in backlog status, um which was represented up here. Seventy-two percent of the sixty-nine cases we have are in backlog status. This is our caseload clearance rate over time, uh this is represented on the first page, but here you're seeing uh the one eighteen. And this is our, um, the number of cases that were closed this past quarter. This case age at closure is um like I referenced earlier, where we see how our case metrics are sensitive. To these outliers that we have, these old cases in um both intake and investigation status. Um, you see, the the top line is the average, whereas the bottom line is the median. You see, the median stays pretty steady over time, um but the median compared to the average, there's a huge difference. So that's telling us that we have these older cases in backlog uh pulling up the average. Incoming cases, so this just reflects our referrals from OCTC over time. Um, it varies quarter to quarter depending on um the complaints OCTC receives. The final graph here is the breakdown of our case inventory by age. The blue is, uh, cases. Less than six months old, the yellow is between six months and a year, and the orange is cases older than one year. The next page, we have cases passing through each phase and the duration of cases at each phase, uh, in days. Taking a look here, you see also the effect of those outliers on our average, uh, for intake. We have a few older cases where. That are on our radar, the CW continues to send additional information to supplement their complaint. So those cases continue to get older in intake. And bring up the average, but overall our median, uh, is fairly low. Next you have, uh, the same information represented for investigations. Um, here there's not as great of a difference between the investigation. And intake for, uh, number of days between average and median, um, however. As represented on the first page, uh, these numbers are too high and they're outside the target. The last substantive page here we have is quality. Um, this is the percent of reopen for reasons other than new evidence. Um, this past quarter, we did not have any reopen for reasons other than new evidence. And, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we had our first random audit, um, and there were no, uh, recommendations to reopen any of the files. And with that, I'll take any, um, we have a glossary as well like OCTC and I'll take, uh, any questions that the board may have.
All right, thank you, Ms. Laguna, for that. Any questions or comments? Yes, trustee Tony.
Um, could you please remind us of the staffing, how the staffing works? It's my understanding that there are, that we don't have state bar employees. Who are, you know, staffing these cases, reviewing them. Could you just remind us how, how it works, please?
Sure, there's a panel of about twenty to twenty-five, uh, attorneys. They're. Not, they, they cannot be state bar employees because of the conflict. There, um, so it's a mix of folks who used to work at the state bar and have significant state bar experience as well as civil practitioners. Um, many of them work in the field of legal malpractice.
Great, and they're, they're contractors then, not employees.
That's correct, contractors.
Thank you.
Stacia, I had a question about the, uh, random audit. Is that one individual, a team of individuals?
It was, uh, two individuals and they pulled thirty-two of our files for audit.
And then is, are there any procedures in place if there had been? Um, issues that arose in the audit for there to be additional training or some sort of remedial measures taken?
Yes, um, I have a policy directive on that. So within sixty days of the random audit. And it's not just if they open, if they recommend reopening, it's for all findings of the audit. So within sixty days, uh, I issue a memorandum to the SDTC panel and inform them of the results. And then within ninety days of the audit, uh, we do a formal response to the audit and, um, from there, uh, uh. There, there's an opportunity for training as well on, on different points. For us with this, uh, random audit, it was mostly, um. Training needed with a use of Odyssey and conforming that with OCTC's use.
That was my next question. Does that policy then track with, uh, policies and OCTC about how random audits are used as, um, as training?
Yes, um, so I modeled my policy directive after the one from OCTC and then modified it to fit our needs, given that. We're not all in one office and we're generally pretty siloed from one another.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none. Thank you so much.
Right, thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to item da- uh, item sixty dash five. This is. Uh, proposed amendments to rules at the state bar relating to early neutral evaluation conferences or ENECs. That's rule five point three zero. And pre-filing conferences and misdemeanor conviction matters, five point three four one. This is a request to circulate for public comment. And we are joined by our chief trial counsel, counsel, uh, George Cardona, so welcome again.
And we're also joined by Kathy Schur, um, from the State Bar Court.
Welcome.
So, uh. If Alfred provides up, that'd be great. Thank you very much. All right, so this is an item that we're coming back to you. This, uh, reflects, uh, proposal for implementation of one of the recommendations of the ad hoc commission. Based on, um, the board's discussion at the, uh, September meeting. Um, so just to, and it relates to early neutral evaluation conferences. So if we can go to the next slide, um, just to walk you through very quickly. So an early neutral evaluation conference is currently provided for in the rules. Um, it's a mandatory, uh, pre-filing conference. So the conference takes place before we file a notice of disciplinary charges and it's overseen by state bar court judge. Um, it is pre-filing and the intent of it is to provide the parties with an opportunity to get a sense of the state bar court's views on the case. Before we file and before we file is before the charges become public. Um, because the charges become public once we file a notice of disciplinary charges, which is why the pre-filing nature, um, is important. Um, the goal is to again get that view from the state bar court, which may lead to modification of charges or case resolution and settlement. And by the way of a stipulation before we have to file charges and proceed through the full process. So if we can go to the next slide. Um, this is something that's unique to California, uh, was looked at in connection with the SB two eleven case processing standards proposal. And in particular, we consulted, if you recall that proposal, we consulted three subject matter experts as part of that process. Um, they noted the uniqueness of this process. They noted that it could significantly slow the charging stages in certain cases. And they made two alternative recommendations relating to the ENEC. Um, one recommendation was the potential for eliminating these ENECs in favor of instead a mandatory, um, evaluation settlement conference. Conducted with the court after filing. Or two, to change how we apply the time standard to cases completed by OCTC for purposes of the SB two eleven case processing standards. Before the ENEC, in other words, we would shift the start point up to the time when S, when OCTC notifies opposing counsel of the opportunity. To have any ENEC, that would be the ending point of OCTC's case processing time. Um, the SB two eleven case processing standards as adopted, the proposal reflected the second alternative. So we went with the second alternative. Um, so with that, turning to the next slide. The ad hoc commission, um, made, uh, a couple of recommendations. Um, one, they said that there should be modifications to ENECs to try and make them more effective vehicles for reaching pre-filing settlements. Um, which would save both the court and OCTC resources, make the whole process more effective, if in fact they could be used to accomplish more pre-filing settlements. That was one recommendation. A second recommendation was that an option similar to an early neutral evaluation conference should be provided. In misdemeanor criminal conviction transmittals. Right now, the current rules only provide an ENEC in original disciplinary investigations. Not where the charges are based on a criminal conviction. There is no provision currently for any type of pre-transmital conference. When we're transmitting the result, the fact that attorney has been convicted of a misdemeanor to the review department for handling. Um, that transmittal is basically the equivalent of a filing of notice of disciplinary charges and that it makes it all public. So with this, we got board direction. If we can go to the next slide, um, at the January twenty twenty-three meeting, um. Uh, we got direction from the board. I'm in touch with the first recommendation to propose revisions to the applicable rules to promote the use of early neutral evaluation conferences as a mechanism for arriving at settlements. And to study possible revisions to the rules to see if it was feasible to conduct pre-transmittal filing. Meetings in misdemeanor conviction matters. We then came back in September, um, there was further discussion, um, and the board directed us to proceed with proposed, uh, revisions. To the ENEC rules, um, that had been developed by a state bar court working group after getting input from both us and from the Association of Discipline Defense Council. Um, and the other direction we got was to proceed with the second. And of two alternatives that had been presented for consideration at the September meeting, which was. Amendments to the rules to provide OCTC with the option of requesting a pre-transmittal conference. Where we believe that it might have some impact on our decision to transmit. So with that, if we can turn to the actual proposed amendments, Kathy Schur will talk about the proposed amendments to rule five point three zero.
Thank you and good afternoon. Um, so the proposed changes to rule five point three zero, um, that are described on your screen right now. Were developed by a working group of state bar court judges and counsel, and I just wanted to briefly give a little bit of explanation of the intent behind the changes that are proposed. Um, let me start out by saying that in the experience of the state bar court, even under the existing rules. Um, ENECs are valuable in helping the parties reach settlement. Um, this can often be true even in those cases where settlement is not reached prior to the filing of the NDC. ENECs help to resolve cases at an early stage by giving each party the opportunity to learn more about the other side's case and settlement position. And by educating respondents about the disciplinary process and potential sanctions. The changes that we proposed are intended to build on these aspects of, of ENECs to make them an even more effective tool for settlement. The changes recognize the role of ENECs in facilitating settlements by renaming them as pre-filing settlement conferences. They require the parties to submit settlement conference statements and to meet and confer before the conference is held. And they allow greater flexibility in scheduling the conference. Finally, the changes eliminate the requirement for the judge to give an oral evaluation of the case at the conference. The state bar court's judges find that this is not generally useful in encouraging settlement. And it often calls on the judge to make a determination without having adequate information before them. These changes are intended to encourage settlement by ensuring that both sides come prepared to the conference, allowing for an informed discussion. That can move both sides towards settlement. Um, and I'm happy at the end to answer any questions you may have as to how these, uh, proposals, the proposal was developed.
So if we can go to the next slide, um, the second set of proposed amendments serves the rule five point three point four one, five point three four one. Um, and these relate to pre-transmittal settlement conferences in misdemeanor criminal conviction matters. And the development of these amendments, to a certain extent, they track the amendments to rule five point three zero in terms of the procedures for. But they are different because of the very strict time limit that is imposed by statute. For transmittals of criminal conviction matters. In other words, we have a thirty-day statutory timeframe in which we are required to transmit. The criminal convictions that runs from the time that we receive the certified record of conviction. Um, and so the rules are slightly different. The modification, the rule proposed is different in that it sets, um. Rules to accord with that strict timeframe. So first, it makes this optional. It provides OCTC with the option of requesting a pre-transmittal settlement conference. Um, we have the obligation under the statute to make a final determination whether transmittal is required by statute, and that's required whenever. A criminal conviction, um, does or may involve moral turpitude or other facts and circumstances warrant discipline. So the reason for the optional, uh, transmission is. Um, it avoids a waste of OCTC and court resources where we've made the determination that. We don't think a conference is going to alter our determination to transmit. I note in this regard that the transmittal will be of information that's already publicly available, unlike in. As a disciplinary charges, it's simply a transmittal of the record of the respondent's misdemeanor criminal conviction, which is already public. There are multiple provisions in the amendments to ensure that the conference is scheduled. Um, they include specific authorization for us to proceed with the transmittal if for whatever reason the requested conference can't be scheduled or conducted. Within the mandatory timeframes. So unlike the amendments to rule five point three zero that provide flexibility in scheduling. Here there isn't that flexibility because we have to comply with the thirty-day statutory timeframe. We did include provisions to ensure that just as with the ENECs, um, the parties come prepared to the conference, including requirements that the parties meet and confer and submit settlement conferences. Uh, again, in the hopes that these pre-transmittal settlement conferences where they are conducted. Will in fact hopefully lead to more pre-transmittal resolutions. Um, so these are the proposed amendments and outline, um, the text is provided, um, in both red. And clean version in the attachments. And our recommendation is that the board authorize us to send these out for public comment so that we can gather those public comments. And make any revisions to the amendments that we view as appropriate once we get that public comment back. And with that, um, I think I are available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your work in this. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, just want to. Um, reiterate, uh, what was said at the very beginning that, uh, this is a work that started out in the ad hoc. A commission on the discipline system, uh, brought together many stakeholders from all over California and indeed some. Uh, throughout the US, um, the, uh, discipline, uh, bar was heavily involved. Uh, with the process, offered their insight, offered their public comment. During this process, state bar court was an invaluable resource as well and, uh. Appreciate the final product here that is now being put out for public comment, um. Any last questions, comments? All right, I have a motion then. Thank you, Alfredo, for putting this up.
So moved.
Second.
All right, first by trustee Huser, second by trustee Tony. Madam Secretary, may I have the roll call?
Una Ventura.
Aye.
Ten. Not present, Sisneros. Sisneros.
Aye.
Thank you. Good, not present, Huser.
Aye.
Shelby, not present, Soel.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
Seven eyes, zero nays, motion carries.
Great, thank you. Thank you, George. Thank you, Kathy. Kathy, please pass along to. Rest of the, uh, state bar court, our appreciation for, uh, working, uh, with us in this area. All right, moving on to, uh, item dash sixty dash six, and that is proposed clarifying corrective amendments to the state bar rules regarding electronic service address. Application for involuntary enrollment, filing requirements, burden approved, beginning moral character proceeding, disclosure of information and investigation. Depositions, this is a request to circulate for public comment. And presenting on this is again, uh, Mr. Cardona.
Thank you. Um, so as you can see, this is a request relating to, uh, a variety of different rules, uh, across the, uh, state bar rules. Um, the, the modifications or the proposed amendments are to make a number of corrections. Um, so for example, um, we're proposing modifications to rule five point two two six, um, direct. Standard for applications for involuntary enrollment to accord with statutory amendments from two thousand nineteen to the underlying statute. So that the rule and the statute would now align. Um, similarly, we're suggesting modifications to rule twenty-three oh two, which applies to the disclosure of confidential information. To accord with the amendments to Business and Professions Code, section six zero and on again to align the statute and rule. Um, we're also proposing some mod- some modifications to clarify things relating to, for example, email addresses for service of documents. Uh, who has to, uh, provide those, um, clarify, um. Um, that service may be by electronic service for certain filings. Um, and, um, in other instances, clarify the application and slightly modify the application of rules in light of a recent review department decision. Um, that addressed what are pre-filing requirements, um, and how those pre-filing requirements need to satisfy for people who are applying for reinstatement. Um, so it's a variety of rules. Um, again, the language in both red line and clean version is all laid out. Um, as our, as a discussion of the various rules and the agenda item. We're again requesting authorization to send these out for public comment for forty-five days, so we can see if there are any issues with any of the rules and address those.
All right, thank you for that presentation. Any questions? All right, thank you for that presentation. Any questions? I'll sending this out for public comment. All right, any comments or may I have a motion?
I move to send out for pu- to public comment.
I'll second.
Right, first by trustee Tony, second by trustee Soel. Madam Secretary, may I have the roll call, please?
One of Ventura.
Aye.
Chen, not present, Sisneros.
Aye.
Good, not present, user.
Aye.
Shelby, not present, Soel.
Aye.
Tony.
Aye.
Trejo.
Aye.
Stallings.
Aye.
Seven eyes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, thank you, uh, George for that. All right, moving to seven zero two. This is the update on the July twenty twenty four bar exam administration, um. Item seven zero one, we're going to take as close to three thirty as we can uh to accommodate uh trustee's schedule. Like we're promoting.
Yes, they are joining now.
Right. We have Cody and Amy, welcome.
Hello, good afternoon.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. Uh, so excited to be here today to share some updates uh regarding the July twenty twenty four bar exam administration. Uh, just some quick background before we dive into this, as you all likely know, the Committee of Bar Examiners requested that the state bar transition to a one-day remote exam. Uh, initially aiming for February of twenty twenty four. The focus on a one-day remote exam due to the fact that uh our current usage of the M B E requires us to administer uh the second portion, the multiple choice portion of the exam in person. Uh, but understanding uh the feasibility, uh the potential limitations of a remote exam, the uh importance of this uh administration, we as an organization determined that additional research needed to be done. Uh, and so we initiated an office-wide effort to research this topic, explore opportunities uh with a new eye for the July twenty twenty four administration. And um our exploration really focused in on a few key areas of focus, uh one being improving and strengthening exam security in a remote setting. And the second being addressing testing accommodations that uh previously were difficult to deliver in a remote exam setting. So the purpose of today's presentation is to share the highlights of our exploration thus far, uh identify some progress that's been made, addressing the challenges that I've just identified, and we will share the direction that our staff is leaning after gathering a plethora of information uh and uh identify opportunities for uh our staff to continue ongoing research and testing. Uh, so start to start with just some additional background and overview. Uh, the Office of Admissions is facing, you know, known structural budget issue. Uh, the approved fees, the fees approved by the board in September alleviate most, but not all of the funding gap. And I'll um communicate some of those numbers in just a moment. So our uh intention in this research is to focus on expense size side reductions uh that we feel can be achieved through um reimagining exam uh costs and administration. Uh, so with that in mind, there are um, you know, significant cost reductions needed. We have uh for the February twenty twenty four exam uh been able to secure some level of reductions in what we are calling our reduced facilities model, uh an in-person exam model, uh where we have um fewer but larger exam facilities. Uh, the research that we're going to talk about today was aimed at ident- identifying even more aggressive cost reductions that are available uh via a one-day remote model. But it's important to note at the top here that while cost reduction is a priority, uh, we feel that it's been incredibly important for us to consider a multifaceted approach that considers not just cost efficiency, but again, this emphasis on the highest standards of exam security, uh ensuring that the remote exam is accessible for nearly all exam takers with testing accommodations if possible, and you know, always striving for inclusivity and accessibility uh among these cost reduction efforts. Uh, so as I mentioned, um, we presented in September uh the cost savings that the February bar exam administration uh would provide, and we set it amongst the forecast for the twenty twenty four budget. And that forecast in September included about seven point nine million dollars in what were, at that time, the proposed fees. So I want to re-present um a revision to that's uh those numbers from September, recognizing that the COWS fees were not adopted uh and that the P H V and O S A C fees are pending Supreme Court approval. With that in mind, that reduces the um the uh revenue from the fees by about one million dollars, and so what was proposed in September as a um surplus, uh, at this point, our forecast actually presents a deficit of about five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, so this is just some context setting as we discuss the different models uh that we have developed, um, thinking about a one-day remote exam and the cost reductions that it provides. Um, and just some additional considerations before we move from these numbers, uh our forecasts do suggest um a higher than expected number of individuals may apply for the bar exam in twenty twenty four. That could impact positively revenue uh that is yet to to bear out, so we have not adjusted these numbers. Um, and also on the other side, exam-related expenses uh do continue to increase, particularly related to facilities costs, which we will discuss momentarily. So we really wanted to bring to you all um highlights from this office-wide exploration effort, um, and to share with you some, some of the most important findings that have come out of that work. So I want to start with something I think really level sets the discussion. Uh, state bar researchers analyzed data from post-exam surveys and exam outcomes and found that there was little to no performance differences between those who took the exam in a remote setting and in-person exams. On top of that, there was no statistically significant performance difference between applicants with testing accommodations and those without testing accommodations in the remote exams as well. And there are interesting demographic differences as well. We found that Hispanic and Latino test takers exhibited better performance in the remote testing modalities. So this really sets a strong foundation about why remote exams are worthy of researching. Um, we also engage other jurisdictions and potential partners. We recognize that um there have been so much innovation in the space, particularly during and after the pandemic, uh that we really wanted to reach out to others uh to gain insights. So for example, we engage other jurisdictions, including uh the state of New York, and even um international uh organizations like the Federation of Law Societies in Canada. Uh, we also um engage other licensing and certification entities here in the state uh and across the country, one being the Department of Insurance and the other being uh the Certified Financial Planner Board, uh just to name a few. And what we found was that uh entities of all sorts and sizes are embracing remote exams and are quite um happy with the outcomes that they've been able to achieve, with the important caveat being that uh the needs of these organizations are far different from the state bar. Uh, so some of these entities use on-demand exams, others use smaller pools of applicants uh or have smaller pools of applicants, and others just frankly have higher tolerances for uh security risks. Um, beyond that, we wanted to identify the newest and most cutting-edge exam approaches and technologies. And so we engaged multiple remote exam delivery and remote proctoring vendors. Um, we re-engaged previous partners, but we also found that there are new dual-camera proctoring approaches that we're going to discuss momentarily uh that improve exam security and integrity. We also found new remote exam delivery platforms that allow assistive technologies um and physical assistance like typist to be brought into a remote setting. And we also engaged, you know, new partnerships, un- unlikely bedfellows on how to develop novel approaches, and one that really stood out to us is um the opportunity to bring in-home proctoring into a remote exam setting to really um meet the needs of those with the most challenging testing accommodations. And so we engage the trade associations and labor groups that represent in-home supportive service workers, recognizing that there's a pool of potential proctors out there that have unique skills that could help us achieve something like in-home proctoring. On top of that, we reviewed our testing accommodations and application process to ensure alignment with the one-day remote model. And of course, we gained feedback from our psychometricians, counsel, and public stakeholders, uh really with the goal to identify the best practices for ensuring a level playing field. So I want to um compare our models, and I want to start first with our in-person models, and then we will uh compare that to our one-day remote models. Um, and before I do that, I do want to share some assumptions that we've built into our models. Uh, first, we have forecast and uptick in exam takers. Um, we felt that the best way to estimate the number of exam takers in July of twenty twenty four was to essentially identify a correlation factor between previous years' one L enrollment and then the corresponding exam enrollment for that cohort. And so what we estimate is about seven thousand five hundred exam takers. Um, among uh, among the other assumptions that we've taken on, we've wanted to use the most current trends when it comes to testing accommodations. And we have found that um we estimate for February twenty twenty four that about eleven percent of the population will be uh exam takers with testing accommodations, and about nine percent of the population will be those who have extended time. And so our models are based on these assumptions and changing trends that um really are happening in real time. So the traditional facilities model presented here is what would be, you know, our historic exam administration. It would be fully in-person at twelve to fourteen facilities, as we've done in July's past. Uh, the reduced facilities model, as we call it, uh would be fully in-person. It would continue the approach that we are embracing in February of twenty twenty four with about eight facilities. So to just quickly identify some pros and cons here, uh under the traditional model, we benefit from an exam administration that is familiar to both state bar staff and some applicants, which reduces the potential for errors. Um, having more sites, of course, reduces travel time and cost for exam takers who have more facilities to choose from. And we do feel that in-person examination with onsite proctors is the most secure approach today. Now, the cons are that the high and growing cost of facilities really would mean that the traditional model prevents the Office of Admissions from achieving its cost reduction goals. And frankly, this model um is more challenging than it has ever been because some of the facilities that we have used in the past are really no longer available uh to the state bar for various reasons. Now, the reduced facility site um will be tested in February of twenty twenty four, so we will have the ability to iron out uh the kinks, and this administration will be familiar to staff in July of twenty twenty four. Uh, other pros include that it it offers significant cost reduction, um, the the same type of cost reduction that we anticipate will uh be achieved during the February twenty twenty four administration. And again, the security of in-person exams and proctoring is ideal. Uh, the cons are that there's increased travel time and cost for exam takers uh when there are fewer facilities to choose from. Um, and similarly, there are ongoing efforts to secure the facilities necessary uh for July twenty twenty four, even under the reduced facilities model. Um, so what you're seeing here in comparison is our um thinking is to balance both the familiarity familiarity of the exam, cost efficiency and security, while acknowledging the impacts that it would have on exam takers and and logistics associated with taking the exam. Uh, so quickly, uh, just to discuss our one-day remote models, we have three models that we want to present to you today. We have um one model in which we would deliver the exam and proctor the exam remotely on day one using the full suite of software available uh by Examsoft. Um, and then day two would initiate, would uh be in-person using the reduced facilities model. Uh, again, there's a level of familiarity that comes with using platforms that the staff and applicants have used in the past. Uh, we do believe that Examsoft is an established vendor with uh the appropriate technological infrastructure to support the large-scale needs of the state bar. Um, and under this model, we would gain even further cost reductions compared to the reduced facilities model. Uh, the cons, you know, some are obvious. There are security risks um that come with uh online uh remote exams, and there are proctoring limitations that come from the record and review approach that Examsoft software requires. There's always a risk of technological failure under a remote model. And frankly, this suite of tools does not allow us to meet um a list of difficult-to-deliver testing accommodations that we hoped to address in this research. So what we have in the second model is what we're calling our new proctoring and exam delivery option. This would be a one-day remote exam in which we utilize some of the new uh online live remote and remote proctoring platforms that we've discovered in our research. And and some of the new approaches address these exam security and testing accommodation questions that we hope to address. So for example, uh, we have the ability to employ a dual-camera live proctoring approach, which means that an individual not only has a camera pointed towards them, but uses their mobile device to get a second perspective into the room. It enhances security. There's a live proctor being able to view both angles. Um, and we feel that that addresses so many of the concerns that a remote exam creates with regard to exam security. Uh, that proctoring approach can also be paired with an exam delivery tool that addresses a testing accommodations that we have not been able to address remotely in the past. That includes um bringing in these physical assistants, typists, and scribes through um a new video uh merging approach. Uh, and this too would provide further cost reductions compared to even the Examsoft proctoring model presented to the left. Again, the cons are familiar to us. There is a risk of technological failure, but some new considerations here that the uh new vendors are less established. They have fewer resources available to support the state bar. And frankly, the new technology is not fully tested at scale. The largest stress test that we've been able to identify is about thirteen hundred individuals. And the third model we're presenting here is essentially model one, using a remote one-day exam with Examsoft delivery tools. Uh, but the addition of in-home proctors, which would help us address the most challenging uh testing accommodation needs. So again, the pros is that having someone in the space with the individual allows us to deliver certain accommodations that cannot be done uh with just a remote exam software. It does improve exam security for those who have an in-home proctor. And um if we were to hire in-home proctors uh through our our own recruitment efforts, our um team has determined that it would have minimal cost because these would be proctors hired very similarly to the existing pool of proctors who, let's say, do proctoring in a hotel under our traditional models. Um, the main challenge to this model is that it's logistically challenging. How to identify the number of individuals that need to be in 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 exam takers' homes? Where are these individuals located? It is a logistical challenge. Um, and that's where engagement with the trade association came in because we were able to identify potential partners who would help us recruit individuals in specific communities. Uh, but along with that, um, kind of contracted partner model would be an increasing cost.
Tony, I'm going to jump in. I just really want to be sensitive to the time. I know you have a few more slides and we need to um open it up. I know you have a few more slides and we need to open it up for some discussion and move to the PDE item. So if you could go quickly and maybe focus on what what we are recommending and why at this juncture, thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, I'll share a recommendation in a moment. I'll just point out one additional one takeaway that I think is important. We have found that there's some great opportunities here to explore the remote exam model further. But we feel to do this appropriately, it requires additional research. And so I listed here just some examples. Our existing software is evolving. There are new vendors introducing new features. And we are excited about things like in-home proctoring as opportunities to fill in the gaps. But they truly need additional research and frankly, testing and piloting to be able to implement them at scale. So that leads us to what our preliminary staff recommendation for July 2024 is. And that is to continue with the reduced facilities model that we are embracing for February 2024. And the reason that is the case is because it continues our the cost reductions necessary for the Office of Admissions to improve its budget position. It is the safest approach, given the degree of unknowns related to these new technologies. And again, that is, that goes to our priority of making sure that we guarantee exam security. But this is a preliminary staff recommendation because we want to continue to explore other options and continue to research and test these technologies with our goal to bring a final recommendation to the board in January. And with that, happy to take any questions.
All right. Thank you for that comprehensive presentation. And again, no action is being taken today, so any questions or comments? This will be brought back in January. All right, Cody, if you could take down the presentation so we can see the, okay. All right, I see trustee Solow.
I actually don't have a have any questions for Cody. I just wanted to say hi. Cody and I worked together previously in in the work that I do with my day job. And I literally, his name came up in a in a conversation just yesterday with one of my team members, Sam Sanghui knows. And so I just wanted to say hi and thanks for the presentation, Cody.
Appreciate it. Happy to see a friendly face here.
All right. I don't see anything else. So Cody, Amy, thank you for your work on this and look forward to receiving more information in January.
Thank you.
Just as a way of update, the item that was pulled off a consent, that was item 50-10, which is the amendments to the Board Policy Manual. The plan as of now is to address that right after the Jenny item. So basically, the second thing tomorrow morning. So Mark, does that answer your questions? Okay. Perfect. All right. Item dash 701, proposal for portfolio bar exam. This is a return from public comment and a request for transmission to the Supreme Court for approval. And we are joined by several individuals. I believe Audrey Ching is going to be leading this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon. I'm Audrey Ching, the Director of the Office of Admissions. I'd like to introduce also members of the Alternative Pathway Working Group, Susan Bachian, Mylan Spencer, Natalie Rodriguez, and Dean Jackie Gardina. I'm going to go through a presentation and then open it up to questions, and they will assist with the Q and A.
Welcome.
Thank you. Louisa, did you want me to share?
I'm so sorry. Give me one second. I apologize.
I have it too. I can share it if you'd like.
It's okay. I have it up. Okay. Can you see my screen? Okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay.
Okay, so we can go to the next slide. Thank you. So in front of the board today are some options to send the Alternative Pathway Working Group's proposal to the Supreme Court as is, to send the proposal to the Supreme Court with the amendments and modifications recommended by staff, or to decide not to advance a modified proposal or the original proposal at all. Next slide. And so we've talked about this in September, but just to recap, some of the key elements of a portfolio bar exam. The eligibility criteria recommended in the proposal is to have a J D from an ABA accredited or Cal accredited law school, and that unaccredited law school graduates would not be eligible. Recommended curriculum would cover the nine doctrinal subjects identified by the Blue Ribbon Commission. The practice scope would be very similar to the rules and scope related to provisional licensees in the provisional licensure program, supervisor qualifications, supervisors holding active California licenses, and those wouldn't be immediate family members of the candidates in the program. I have highlighted them on this slide because all of these elements would be either waived or they would be already in place for the pilot because we're talking about a pilot group who have been practicing under the provisional licensure program rules since 2020. Next slide. Other elements of the portfolio bar exam, practicing for 700 to 1,000 hours over 17 and a half to 25 weeks, that could be flexible to discuss in the implementation phase. The portfolio contains eight to 13 different work products, meeting specific requirements, two to three essays as part of those work products on professional responsibility, professionalism, or civility. That written work product would reflect analysis of a variety of legal matters. Work product would include a cover sheet explaining the research that was done to complete that work product and the content of the work. There would also be time sheets, similar to the time sheets that provisional licensees turn in now, documenting the number of hours that they've worked in different areas of practice, and also how many hours have been spent on each portfolio component. Grading the portfolios would be graded anonymously by independent graders. State bar graders would be trained based on established grading rubrics. Next slide. So what we're talking about today is moving forward with a pilot. There are approximately 100 remaining provisional licensees in the 2020 graduate program, not in the expanded program. We're talking about the 2020 graduates only. There's actually exactly 117. I tried to get that number right today for the boards. So about 117 remaining original licensees in that provisional licensure program. The pilot would be a small monitored cohort, a good control group. We'd have empirical data, qualitative information from running this pilot. We would be able to vet different issues, outstanding concerns, that's some of the concerns that you've heard in public comment. And we would have a fully informed context for future Board of Trustees and Supreme Court decision-making. Next slide. So public comment. We received a lot of public comment. 2,814 total comments. 71% of those disagreed with the proposal. 29% either agreed or agreed if modified. 2,208 self-identified as California licensed attorneys, and 87% of those licensed attorneys disagreed with the proposal of the 461 self-identified non-attorneys. 84% of those agreed or agreed if modified. Next slide. What if that would be helpful? There was a lot of organizations that wrote in about the portfolio bar exam into the public comment when it was open during the period and also, of course, into the Board of Trustees with written public comments. So kind of breaking down the organizations and how they fell for agree, agree if modified, or disagree. Next slide. So here's a good snapshot, although it's it's small. Lean forward and look at these names. So these are organizations that indicated that they agree or agree if modified. Different bar associations heard from some of those bar associations that agreed today, like the La Raza Lawyers of California, legal aid and policy organizations, 27 of those. Education organizations and law schools, 19 of those, and then other legal organizations representing on that far-right rectangle. So some of these submitted letters with folks that all signed on to one letter and not individual comments. So it's just some of the some of the numbers and noise in the actual data from the public comment dashboard is a little hard to detangle. So I just wanted to kind of break this out on a clear slide for you about which organizations have written in that they agree or agree if modified. And then similarly, next slide. Are the organizations, all the bar associations that wrote in that they disagree with the proposal. So this is the list of groups, many bar associations, as you know, from the written public comment signing on to the Los Angeles County Bar Association letter, disagreeing with the proposal. And then on that right rectangle, other legal organizations. Okay, so what's that?
Did you want to stay on this slide? I'm sorry. I think I
That I think that's good. Thanks, Louisa. And so the way that the public comment website worked is that the individuals were allowed to choose three kind of pre-populated dropdowns. So the first three on the left here on the agree or agrees modified are from that dropdown menu. So the PBE or Portfolio Bar Exam is a good way to assess minimum competence. The PB adequately protects the public. 700 to 1,000 supervised practice hours required by the PBE is adequate. So those are kind of the top choices from a pull-down menu. The rest of the bullet points here are themes from compiling all the 698 written comments that came in. So the current bar exam is inadequate and doesn't assess practical skills. A PBE can better evaluate work experience and foster diversity. Law schools should focus on practical training, which the portfolio system supports. The state bar, having a pilot program for a PBE is a positive step. And then flexibility in meeting these requirements, like allowing volunteering to meet the hours would benefit any candidates in a program like this. Next slide. Again, the first three bullet points here are from that pull-down menu. The PBE is a poor way to assess minimum competence. The PBE does not protect the public. A portfolio of work product cannot be graded as fairly or reliably as a bar exam. And the rest of these bullets are sort of a collation of all the 1,989 written comments that came in that disagree. So a PBE dumbs down the requirements and sacrifices public protection. If there's an alternative pathway, it would undermine equal standards for how we license in California. The portfolio bar exam proposal lacks broad subject matter knowledge, subjective, it's unreliable. There'd be a lack of consistency, quality and support for applicants. There'd be a potential for fraud, a lack of a authenticity of work product, and it doesn't address the areas of greatest need in the profession. Next slide. So these are the recommendations that are in the board item today from staff, which is to take that small cohort group of original provisional licensees and pilot a portfolio bar exam, but add a modification to have up to two performance tests as part of the components for that portfolio bar exam. Right now, the original provisional licensure program is set to sunset by December 31, 2025. That extension already happened last year. So have this pilot be on the same timeframe that exists currently for the individuals who remain in that original provisional licensee set. During this time period, we would finalize the requirements for the pilot, study the outcomes of the pilot, and make recommendations about whether or not it would be good to continue with a portfolio bar exam, additional modifications and lessons learned from the pilot, and whether things would be expanded for the portfolio bar exam post-pilot period. Next slide. How did staff come up with the recommendation? So there's a longstanding concern, as you all know, that a traditional bar exam doesn't test the skills needed for a practice-ready entry-level attorney. Many states are exploring portfolio-based options. I'm going to check my notes because I want to get this right. I wrote them all down for you. So the Oregon Supreme Court approved the supervised practice portfolio exam last week as a licensure pathway to begin in Oregon next year. Washington, Maine, Nevada, Utah, North Dakota, Georgia, Minnesota, they all have alternative pathways in progress. Wisconsin and New Hampshire already have had longstanding alternative licensure pathways as part of their licensure process in their states. A provisional licensed lawyer cohort pilot test with a small existing population, again, a good control group that we already have and we've been tracking since 2020. And the board is consistent with prior board action. The board recommended this type of pilot one year ago to the Supreme Court. So at the November meeting last year, this was one of the options that the board put forward to the court. Why add a performance test component? Well, we want to be sensitive to public comment, and this would address the concerns about portfolio assessment quality, the subjectivity, and the veracity of work product. And assessment pieces like this are used in other jurisdictions that are either exploring or have had supervised practice for a long time. So all the Canadian provinces that we've, we talked about a lot in the Blue Ribbon Commission have either an exam. So Ontario has the barrister and solicitor exam as part of their supervised practice pathway. And many other provinces have an assessment that would include mini exams, workshops, different capstone projects alongside what they call articling or the supervised practice time period in that province. Next slide. Oh, and also, I forgot. Sorry, Louisa. No whiplash, but Utah, which I just mentioned, is one of the many, many states considering alternative pathways to licensure. They plan to include a performance test as part of that licensure proposal. Sorry. Next slide. Okay, so to-dos before pilot implementation. The idea that staff is proposing is that next year, we would work out all the these kinds of to-dos before implementing the pilot in the beginning of 2025. So what exactly are the portfolio components that we're looking at and how many in the proposals is eight to 13? So we'd finalize that, coming up with the rubrics needed for the work product. What a portfolio bar exam cut score would be? So looking at the standard setting and the cut score for how we would determine whether or not someone passed or failed the portfolio bar exam. And then when, when would the portfolio be submitting submitted? What's the timing of the submission and how long would it take to grade? We'd have to train our graders. Obviously, our graders now are grading bar exams. So this would be different to train them, train them on these new rubrics, to have new calibration sessions for our graders. Then we'd have to train the supervisors. New supervisor training would be part of the pilot. And then what are the consequences of failing the PBE that's not determined? If you fail, can you resubmit certain portions of the portfolio? Do you become suspended or terminated as a provisional licensed lawyer? Do you have to take the bar exam if you fail the PBE, et cetera, et cetera? We would need to work that out during this time period. We'd also have the benchmarks and the metrics that we would use to evaluate whether or not the pilot is a success. Next slide. Next slide is thank you and questions. Okay. Thank you and questions.
All right. I'm sure there are zero questions from this group. All right, seeing some Mr. or trustee Solow. Go ahead.
You know, I feel like I don't want to start. I think I'd like to probably hear a little bit more from some of the, some of the attorneys on the, on the board first, and then if you don't mind, that's why I took my, I put my hand up, then I put my hand down. So if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
All right, we'll get you back in the queue. We'll go to trustee Huser.
Yeah, you know, you mentioned the Blue Ribbon Commission several times, and all of the information you very helpfully just presented was obviously considered by them, but yet they didn't recommend this. And we have 61 bar associations that have, you know, expressed at least their concerns. So what would you say, you know, were the primary issues? I'm not sure if you were on this. I'm a new trustee, so I apologize that I don't have all of the history. But what were you said, what would you say were the main concerns of the Blue Ribbon Commission?
Oh, well, and I will let the working group, everyone in the working group was a member of the Blue Ribbon Commission. I was the one of the staff helping to run those meetings. Any of you want to respond? Oh, no, Jackie, you're muted, or I can't hear you.
Well, Jackie gets her microphone working. Let me just say, this is Susan Bachian. Let me just say thank you for having us today, and I'll let Jackie proceed first.
Can you hear me now? All right, thank you. So I wanted to echo what Susan said. First, thank you for both inviting us to submit a proposal as well as to attend this meeting. as well as to um attend this meeting and answer any questions you might have. I'm gonna certainly start with the question that was asked, but then invite Susan, Natalie and um Mylin to offer any alternative viewpoints or or add into something I didn't offer. I also want to mention that um Judge uh Glenn um Reeser is also part of the working group. He wasn't able to attend today, but he's happy to answer questions tomorrow. Uh, if you have any lingering questions that he can respond to. So my experience on the BRC as it related to uh an alternative bar exam wasn't that this particular proposal was rejected. So I I want to put that out there. This particular pro- proposal was never presented because we never got that far in the process. Um, when it came to an alternative pathway recommendation, the BRC neither rejected it nor pushed it forward. In fact, if you look back at the BRC um minutes and the meetings and all the proposals that went forth, recommending it to the Board of Trustees was voting voted down. Not recommending it to the B uh Board of Trustees was voted down. Um, and so there, there wasn't a consensus even about saying we're not going to recommend this uh in terms of rejecting it whole, wholeheartedly. And I would say that the same um tension you see in the public comments here was present on the BRC uh discussions as well. And I invite any of my um working group members to add in.
I would just echo Jackie's comments that at the BRC meetings, I think there's been a lot of discussion that has been inaccurate, that it was rejected. Um, in fact, it was, as she points out, uh, we were gridlocked on how to proceed. Um, but I think it is unfair to say it was not recommended. And as for the bar associations, I think it's important to to acknowledge that there is one very important common theme in the bar association's critiques, and that is that a lawyer's professional identity, as all of us who are California lawyers know, is today associated with the traditional exam. And the associations have expressed some concerns that the working group was disappointed to see reflected. They have not read the proposal or that they misunderstand or have been misled as to what the proposal actually puts forward. So we would like to do some corrections today and make sure that people understand that it is a point of pride to have passed the California bar exam. But that is not a basis to resist um any reforms or improvements to public protection and professional licensing. And that's what the portfolio bar exam is about today. And also one additional point, the traditional exam is not going to remain. Uh, the traditional exam will be changing. The Blue Ribbon Commission made recommendations to the Supreme Court, which this board is um forwarding. That suggests changes to the traditional exam. And also, the traditional exam cannot continue in its current form because the National Conference of Bar Examiners, who writes the uh multiple choice section of that exam, has indicated they will no longer be providing that information. And I believe their new date to close it out is twenty twenty-six.
All right, any other members from the working group who wish to respond? All right, we'll go on to trustee Buena Ventura.
Yes, uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair Stallings. Um, I want to voice my support for moving forward with this item. Um, you know, you hear that that phrase barriers to entry. Um, but one resonated with me when a caller commented of um opening doors. And I think this is what it does. It opens the door uh to people who traditionally would not have been able um to have the opportunity uh to take the the bar, to be admitted to the bar. I think this issue, this, this has been well-vetted. I think the staff has done a great job at putting it this together and ga- getting all the data and statistics and the fact that there's already a control group, sort of say, that's in place. And the fact that times are changing, uh, the way testing is done, the way people are being analyzed. I think we need to move forward. Uh, we need to adjust with the change of the way our society and how, and how we have evaluated people. And so I commend the staff. I, I understand the tension, but I think this is something that's well worth the investment in moving forward in a pilot program. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Buena, Buena Ventura. And records should reflect that trustee Good has joined us. Welcome. Uh, would you like to ask a question or make comments?
I I wanted to make a comment and actually respond to trustee Huser's question um a little bit. Um, I think in a way trustee Huser, there's nobody here present who represents the perspective on the Blue Ribbon Commission who um did not vote to move forward with a portfolio bar examination. And so, y- you know, it 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 puts us in a difficult spot because there's nobody here to kind of articulate that. Um, that said, um, from uh being our liaison to the Council on Access and Fairness, um, I participated in that group's meeting in August where this was discussed. And there were two members of COAF who served on the Blue Ribbon Commission, um, including the current chair of COAF. Um, and um there, you know, interestingly, their perspective was that while um the portfolio bar examination is espoused as a method to uh improve access and break down barriers to the legal profession for all. Um, they had concerns that in reality would actually have a contrary effect um and could potentially create kind of a two-tier system, if you will. One where people who passed the bar exam were sort of favored uh over folks who took this, this other route. And that that kind of two-tier system would then carry over into the profession for the length of kind of their career. And that ultimately it would not foster uh DEI principles to kind of move forward with it. I'm not articulating that as well as they could, but I felt that in fairness, I thought we should, I wanted to at least respond to your question with that. Um, where I come out on it is I was very interested in us getting a proposal that we could consider because it was very frustrating that the Blue Ribbon Commission um engaged in all of its work and then at the end of the day, kind of threw up its hands on this issue and didn't take a position uh for or against. And so I, as trustee Buena Ventura and a few other people were very much in favor of, let's just look at something and see what it actually looks like to decide if we want to move forward with it or not. Um, I have a lot of concerns that it's not going to have the intended effect of breaking down barriers and making the profession more accessible. Um, but um, that said, after reading the uh humongous, yeah, that's a word, um, comments from everybody. Um, and everybody, you know, this is a really, really important issue to to lawyers, but kind of sifting through all of that. And I very much appreciate um the various bar associations in California, both for for cities and counties and also the affiliate bar organizations as well, taking a view on this. Um, what stood out for me is that there are a couple of very large bar associations, including the Bar Association of San Francisco, which is always on the forefront forefront of kind of innovation and is very thoughtful that has come out in favor of this. Um, and in addition, the Alameda County Bar Association has come out in favor of this. So yes, there is a very big group of bar associations that's against it, but there are also some other ones, including some very high-quality bar associations who who don't do things lightly, who have taken a contrary view. Um, where I come out on it, um, after kind of thinking through this myself, is that this is a pilot. Uh, we're not creating a rule forever and ever. And at the end of the pilot, we can evaluate, did it actually serve its intended purpose or not? It's a limited group of people. And Audrey, I wanted you to remind me how many people were going to be in this at the end of my remarks. Um, I was also concerned about the cost. I mean, this sounds like a very, very significant cost. And what I was heartened to also read about is that we're going to look for um philanthropic donations to fund this program um so that it's not coming out of our, our budget. And Audrey, I would like for you to address that as well. So at the end of the day, um, while I still have deep concerns and I don't know if ultimately this is going to work, I think we should move forward with the pilot and for all of the right reasons to see, to give it a chance. And to see if the Supreme Court wants to give it a chance. Because ultimately, we're sending it to the Supreme Court who may or may not want to proceed with it. But thus, I'm now in favor of it going to them. So I appreciate you all listening to me on this long-winded uh discussion. And Audrey, I'd love to get the sort of the precise answers to those two issues, if you wouldn't mind.
Uh, one hundred and seventeen remaining original provisional licensees. Um, that would be part of this pilot. And what was the second question? Sorry.
It's about the funding and maybe remind Sarah, like, uh, Claire confirmed today.
Yeah, so we uh been looking for philanthropic organizations to underwrite this pilot. Um, so that wouldn't be a burden on the Office of Admissions budget, which, as you know, in our just prior staff presentation, we are very sensitive to um our budgetary issues. So if you heard uh the public comment earlier today, um, we have funding that is in place to fund the amount that we put out in the board item.
All right, thank you. Trustee Tony, I want to go over to trustee Huser just to see if there's any follow-up.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions about that. The hundred and seventeen people, as I understand it, were all twenty-twenty grads and therefore they would have now been practicing under this provisional licensure for three years. And this was brought up in some of the public comments as well. So how are you going to evaluate a pilot for success when what we're, you know, suggesting the terms are, and I I hope I wrote these down right, is seventy to one thousand hours working over seventeen to twenty-five weeks. Those are two completely different things. Um, so we're evaluating a pilot of people working three years and and recommending a proposal that is people working three to six months. So just how does that all work?
So that's a good, that's a good question because they have been working um and under uh supervised practice, you know, since twenty twenty. But the idea is with their final year of when they would be able to be in this original provisional licensure program, we will have them do the full uh uh program that's recommended. So actually, complete the, you know, they'd have to complete the hours, you know, so we want them to do the hours, record the time sheets, even though, yes, they have been practicing, but that's how we're going to do a controlled experiment, right? So they do the hours, they're supervised, they do the time sheets, and they would actually complete all these work products. They have not been uh doing work products that have been graded, right? That's not been part of what they've been doing during this uh period since twenty twenty. So we'd actually be able to have all their work product submissions. We would be able to grade those as part of a portfolio. We would, um, the staff recommendation again is to add in one or two performance tests. So we have like an objective anchor as part of this whole process. So we would do the full experiment with them in the year twenty twenty-five. Yes, they've been practicing, but they're still a good group because they have a supervisor in place and they have all the other pieces in place for us to kind of experiment with the full implementation of what's recommended in the proposal.
But Audrey, I would just suggest the other piece is they have very different experiences within this last three years. So um I I think maybe to your point, Mary, if they've been doing this a hundred percent full-time these last three years with a supervisor who's been supervising the way that is contemplated as part of the pilot, because that is another piece of the pilot, is there will be supervisor training and different sort of um a structure for that that's not been in place these last few years. So those folks who maybe are in a placement right now that exactly matches what this uh um PBE would look like, they would be in an advantage and probably they're not, to your point, maybe that the um exact best population for a pilot in that sense, that they've already got all this experience. But from a lot of data we have from surveys that we've done at this population, I think the vast majority of them have not had the kind of structure that will be in plenty sort of PBE. So it is kind of fair. Yes, they've been doing this for three years, but it's looked very different. Um, and certainly without this level of structure.
Yeah, I don't want to jump in front of the line. Um, but you know, if they were provisionally licensed, they had to be under the supervision of an attorney during that time. And did we give any consideration to having, you know, new law grads or somebody? Because if we're going to evaluate this program to see how well people did, I presume somebody who's worked for three years would do a lot better than somebody who's worked for three months. And so we're not, we're comparing apples to oranges when we're gonna send this and evaluate this pilot after some period of time. So that that caused me concern. I do think it's wonderful to have an alternative pathway. Um, I'm not suggesting it's not, but I'm just very concerned that we're having a pilot that isn't measuring what we're hoping um to measure.
May I add something quickly?
Yes.
Thank you. To, while we're on the topic of the pilot, one of the things we did do was meet with psychometric experts. The working group talked to them about pilot creation and whether or not this group would be appropriate, addressing some of the very concerns you have. Are they, they are not a direct match to a new grad. But in many ways, they're a more challenging group and in fact provide a better pilot than new grads, many of which are not in twenty-twenty circumstances. As we all recall, the provisional licensing lawyer program started in the pandemic in the middle of an emergency. So because of that, the pilot group will have a lot of quite different folks in it, and that actually is very valuable to the psychometricians. And they did express support for the fact that this would be a good group because the state bar does have a lot of data tracking on them already. We will be able to parse the data very finely. The pilot is also designed to do some other things. It's not just simply a comparison of whether or not it will be predictive of success. It's also designed to give us an opportunity to craft, very carefully craft rubrics, very crap, carefully craft the supervision requirements and restrictions and all of the other components of an excellent pilot. But just, I, it did uh allay, I think, many of our concerns in the working group when the psychometricians did say that this is a and the experts did share the opinion that this was an excellent group to pilot.
All right, thank you. Uh, going to trustee Tony.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciated the depth of the comments that trustee Good gave and just going through her thinking process. Um, I I respect that very much. It's um and and just appreciate. I also appreciate trustee Huser's um question about the pilot and its applicability. And I I will just say that, you know, I would be open to, uh, you know, we're not deciding today, but I'd be open to considering a second stage pilot after this pilot. I don't think we're in a huge rush here because I think the concerns that trustee Huser brings up about the applicability is legitimate. And I don't think that should stop us from proceeding with this. I do support proceeding with this, but I want to be open to whether we consider to uh leave it as an open question as to whether we uh do a second stage pilot with it, with the new um uh uh graduates, okay, of law school. So I want to start with that. I I have a a a basic question. I don't mean to go too long, but um it's really, I I I need education on what's the difference between an accredited law school and an unaccredited law school? I have no clue what that means. And the reason I ask is because at least in the original um set of recommendations, my understanding is that that's not what we're voting on. We're voting on a pilot right now. But what's the difference?
So um in California, we have the ABA-approved law schools, the California accredited law schools, uh, which we uh regulate at the state bar. And they have to maintain a forty percent NPR, which is a minimum pass rate of from the bar exam. Um, and then we have the unaccredited law schools that are not um do not need to maintain that same level of minimum pass rate. Um, but they are under a different set of unaccredited rules that we have at the state bar.
Okay, so let me ask you this. Um, do, for this pilot, Um, for the uh, group of provisionally licensed lawyers. Um, and I don't need an exact number, but i- is the accredited, unaccredited going to apply to them? Or?
Sorry.
I, I just don't know about them, you know, how this applies, help me out.
My recommendation, there are eight um, in that one seventeen from unaccredited law schools. My recommendation is to not exclude them from the pilot. They have been provisionally licensed in the same way um, also since twenty twenty. My recommendation is to, and I, I had it on, you know, in that one slide, which things would be waived or already in place. My recommendation would be not to exclude them from the pilot.
I, 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 I'm, I'm glad to hear that. Partly because um, this is important data we can get. Is that, you know, what is the difference? Is there a difference in the success rate? Uh, for the uh, pilot between those who are accredited and unaccredited? Uh, from, from, you know, graduates, I mean, from credited or unaccredited law schools. Because I just don't know enough about the difference to know if that's a significant difference. That as we move forward, we want to keep or want to modify. I, I'd like to be driven by the data on that one. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right, I did have one follow-up question based upon trustee Tony's questioning, and that was, I think in the past, we've. Um, we've had a presentation on the uh, PLP program and whether or not there was. A significant increase in the amount of complaints we're receiving regarding that cohort compared to, um, you know, other similarly situated lawyers. Do, do you have those numbers or a sense of, you know, if, if we're seeing an uptick in complaints regarding PLP? Um, individuals.
That was actually in the alternative pathway working groups proposal. I'm sorry about um. Uh, the thorough, the thorough survey that was done about provisional licensees in the program. And there's not, uh, there's not a significant misconduct or complaints uh, about the, the cohort that we're talking about.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on to trustee Sol.
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you to the staff for the, for the presentation and to uh. I echo the, the comments of uh, of Mr. Tony in terms of uh, the fellow, the, my fellow board members. Sort of articulation of uh, of this particular issue. It's been very, very sort of helpful to me in terms of uh, trying to uh. Uh, discern, um, you know, um, sort of facts here, so to speak. Uh, I do have uh, uh, two, uh, two questions. Uh, one is, um, obviously, we've, we, we've gotten a, a, a lot from the various legal organizations. Uh, and their positions on both sides of this issue. But we got uh, like two thousand, almost two thousand respond, individual respondents. I just wonder if we have any additional information about uh, the demographics of those respondents, you know? Did they, do they work at large, you know, law firms? Do they, you know, uh, ethnicity? Do they come from, um, you know, are, are they, you know, single? Um, uh, law firm, uh, individuals, those, those sorts of things like that. I just wonder if there's any additional sort of breakdown on, on the, or, or is that something that we ask?
That level is not what we asked in the, in the form for public comment. We know if they're, you know, declined to state whether they were attorneys or non-attorneys, you know. So those are kinds of things we ask, are you attorney, not attorney, do you decline to state? If they were submitting from an organization, they would put the organization down. In, in a lot of the written public comment, individuals would self-disclose. Um, how they identify and how the proposal related to the way that they identified. Um, so that would be something I could um, analyze and pull out from the written comments if I was looking for key words. Um, but that did, when, and my reading of the comments, that did come up in a lot of the comments.
Very good. So thank you for that. This, my second question is, um, if we approve uh, this item and we, we hand it over to the Supreme Court. It still sounds like there's still some things with the program that still need to be built. And so I'm, I'm just wondering how that, how that happens. Uh, if um. That's on us, that's on the Supreme Court. I, I, I just don't know how the implementation process, I know you touched on it, but I didn't quite sort of understand that.
Oh, well, if the Supreme Court um, looks at the staff modifications that are in the item and we get the green light, then oh. What would happen is, you know, within the recommendation today with the motion is to establish like a group, a group of. Members of the Committee of Bar Examiners, experts, um, psychometricians, trying to get the um. Have this runaway of twenty twenty-four to build out all the things that we need to determine on what would make this portfolio. Um, something that we can grade and be consistent with. So we meet and vet out these rubrics. And then how to calibrate, how to grade, when things would be due, what a cut score would be, all these um, issues that we kind of need to iron out. That would happen next year, once we get the green light, go ahead and establish this um, group with representatives again from the CBE. Um, and et cetera, and then we would have that ready to go for twenty twenty-five.
Okay, very good. Um, just one quick comment, I can't help but um. Uh, in seeing all the legal aid associations that were uh, in support of this. I couldn't help but think about our former colleague, uh, Mr. Greg Knoll. And uh, would have been very, very interested in hearing his comments on this, uh, on this particular item as well.
Yeah, exactly. I thought the same. Thank you for saying that.
Amen. Uh, trustee Hugheser.
I'm looking at your slide deck. I, I believe it's on page three. And it says eligibility JD ABA accredited and California accredited. But then it says unaccredited school grads not eligible.
That is in the proposal from the working group. Um, what I had, and maybe it's just hard to tell on these slides, but I had these asterisks. That said for the pilot, that would either be waived or already in place. So, um, yes, the proposal from the working group excludes the unaccredited.
Okay. Um, and then um, the, you know, the required supervised practice hours. You're suggesting for this pilot is still seven hundred to a thousand hours over seventeen point five to twenty-five weeks. So less than six months.
And I mean, that, that's something that is flexible, even in the proposal from the working group. It mentions that is a flexible component of, of what they're proposing. Um, so during the implementation phase, I, I imagine we could flesh that out more. But that, that a number is sort of what, you know, like Oregon last week, the Oregon Supreme Court, I think their number is six eighty-five. Cause it's trying to mirror um, the time that someone might uh, prepare and take the bar exam. So it's again, because we're working out with this pilot group and how we're going to be able to kind of self-contain an experiment. Um, that's a recommended number of hours, so we can look at those time sheets and the cover sheets and the work product and have everything kind of timed to be graded. Um, so if we ever moved forward with like a second pilot or a full implementation. We would have that data about like those hours and the work product and how it all worked out with the timing and the grading. But um, again, it's possible in the implementation, there'd be flexibility with those numbers.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll just express my view on those numbers. I think they are woefully too low. Um, I think if you are going to do an alternative pathway such as this. It's vitally important that you have enough time for the supervisors to get to know the person. To train them, to, you know, mentor them and all of this, eight to thirteen work product is, is nothing. Um, seventeen to twenty-five weeks is nothing. You know, if we look at a European model, they do, you know, several years of, you know. Uh, kind of an apprenticeship type thing. They do well over a thousand hours. You look at other licensed organizations, I happen to know mental health specialists, of which my child is one. Um, they have over three thousand hours of required work after they go through. A multi-year educational program. Um, I think personally, these numbers um. Make this untenable to me, um, and cause me strong concerns about um. That it's not a regular, rigorous enough um, proposal.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Um, I do want to follow up with uh, based on trustee Hugheser's question regarding the hours requirement. If we vote to send this forward to the Supreme Court. Is there room uh, for Supreme Court to come back and say, we believe that there should be more hours? We believe that there should be um, more uh, of an extended time. With which the supervising lawyer um, supervises that individual? Or are we tying the Supreme Court to these, to these numbers?
I would think they could come back with the modification or recommendation of their own, um, once they read what we are putting forward. But I don't know if anyone has anything else to add.
I might add just one point of clarification. I think it's important to distinguish the difference between the proposal. Which is a framework and a suggested starting place for making final determinations on a lot of matters. Number of hours, number of products, and exactly what those are comprised of. But what we're deciding today is whether or not to do a very small cautious pilot. To develop some of those things and to get the data we need to know whether. Seven hundred, eight hundred, a thousand or more is an appropriate hours restriction and the number of comments that might, and the number of. The number and type of things in the portfolio and a number of other things. And then, see, because the framework of our proposal is just that, it is a framework for the court as a starting place. They asked for a model which we have done, designed, but it is not designed in any way to be. And in fact, we resisted putting forward a single approach with an absolute concrete decision. That's what the pilot is for. The pilot should be able to address a lot of these concerns and show us the data about what is an appropriate number of hours and items.
Right, and Lita, did you have something you wanted to add?
Yeah, it's just that the Supreme Court has plenary authority in this area, so they can do whatever they want. In terms of modifying the proposal, telling us they want the board to reconsider a certain aspect. The number of hours, who might be eligible, et cetera, and have the board send something back to them. So I think the full range of options is available to them.
All right. If there's no further comments or questions, uh, can we have the resolution put up on the screen?
I'll make the motion.
All right, first by trustee Buena Ventura, sir, second?
Second.
Can't tell if that was trustee Hugheser?
That's good.
I'm sorry, I can't see the whole screen here. All right, first by trustee Buena Ventura, second by trustee Good. Any further comments? Any further debate? You know, I will say as um, someone who re- receives a lot of public comments, especially in uh, in a rural area. That I received um, probably the most public comment about any other item we've ever considered about this particular item. And it has been mixed, uh, to be sure, but I also keep in mind that. Um, I hear concerns about recent law school grads, about uh, individuals who come out of law school. And this idea that they're not ready to uh, practice law, that more experience is needed within law school. Um, I certainly hear the uh, comments from several of the individuals who um, who uh, called in today. About um, the need for more experience, experiential type learning in, in law school. And so certainly this pilot program, if it, if it passes. Um, I think will help to drive uh, those providers of legal education. Uh, to, to give um, that experiential uh, uh. You know, there are that experience necessary to meet a growing demand uh, within uh, within the legal profession, what clients want to see. And while this certainly may not be like the only answer, I think it provides a unique opportunity. And I am in support of, of this proposal. Any other comments or? Debate? If not, then I would like to um, have the roll call, please.
Buena Ventura?
Hi.
Chen, not present, Sisneros?
Hi.
Good?
Hi.
Hugheser?
Nay.
Shelby, not present, Soel?
Hi.
Tony?
Hi.
Treo?
Nay.
Stallings?
Hi.
Six ayes, two nays, motion carries.
All right, thank you to everyone for your work. And let the grand experiment begin.
The court still has to act.
Yes. All right, looking at our agenda items, everybody okay as far as a bio break? Anybody need, need anything? All right, I think we're going to power through then. Brings us to seven oh three. This is promote, proposed amendments to the admission rules regarding examinations and testing accommodations. This is a return from public comment and request for approval and transmission to the Supreme Court for adoption. So if we could have our presenters, it's like we have Christina and is Donna joining us?
Yes. Um. Yes, she's joining.
All right, welcome Donna and Christina.
Thank you. Okay. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm Christina here, um, one of the managers within the Office of Admissions, joined with Donna. And uh, the Committee of Bar Examiners, as you all have known, um, has been recommending revisions to the rules. Uh, to enhance transparency and efficiency within the admissions process while eliminating unnecessary barriers. The exam rule uh, was updated to current practice of electronically posting exam results. Rather than mailing them to applicants. And in the interest of time, I'd like to focus on the testing accommodation rules revisions. As they have been significantly revised based on feedback from applicants, the public input. And stakeholder forums that were held in the past year. The proposed changes in testing accommodations specifically aim to align with the LSAC consent decree. And the DOJ guidelines. It reduces costs associated with receiving a comprehensive evaluation from a doctor. And reduces the wait time for applicants to receive approvals. Accommodations based on permanent disabilities do not expire and they automatically are approved for subsequent exams. The new process allows staff to issue determination sooner and focuses on providing personalized support. And service to applicants. The key revisions in the rules proposal include a simplified process for requesting accommodations. For applicants without prior accommodations, the rules limit the documentation required. To that which is reasonable and narrowly tailored. It gives deference to the applicant's qualified professional, provides considerable weight. Uh, to accommodations provided in college and law school. And it extends the timeline for applicants to request an appeal of a tur- determination. Several areas of disagreement has emerged during the public comment period. Uh, the state bars use of definitions aligns with the language used by the ADA. And its implementing regulations. Comments opposed uh, giving considerable weight to accommodations granted in college. Advocating instead for automatic approval. However, the bar examiners maintain the considerable weight provision. Citing concerns about the consistency across all schools when evaluating accommodation requests. Comments also disagreed with the current timeline and advocated for a two-week review period by staff. And thirty days for applicants to appeal a decision. Here, the bar examiners adopted a tiered approach to the timeline by granting fourteen days to all applicants. Or thirty days to those that file a request by the timely filing deadline. The decision not to further compress the timelines considers practical constraints. Of the exam schedule and existing resource limitation. practical constraints of the exam schedule and existing resource limitations. The committee made the commitment through a motion to revisit the timelines after fully implementing implementing the process for two exam cycles. Comments suggested training, supervision and person, uh, excuse me, and personnel changes should be written into the rules. Um, however, the bar examiners disagreed that these issues are appropriate for the rules but has expanded its pool of medical professionals contracted by the state bar to review testing accommodation requests. Despite disagreement in some aspects, the bar examiners emphasizes the need to balance efficiency with fairness and commits to the continuous evaluation of the process. At that point, that concludes my slideshow. I'm going to stop sharing and would be happy to take comments or questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from the trustees? Okay, trustee Tony.
I would like a reminder and maybe it does benefit other people. But I, I would like a reminder of just um, the time period in which we have um, been discussing and reviewing this, the uh, number of times it has gone out for public comment and version, you know, different, you know, reminder of which version we're on. I think that'd be useful, cuz um, I, I can't quite remember all of it, to be honest. That'd be helpful for me anyway, speak for myself.
Absolutely. This process has been um, going on for the past year. Actually, we held two stakeholder forums, one in two thousand and twenty-two, one in two thousand and twenty-three to discuss this topic, put out the proposed rules, um, the framework of where the state bar thought they were gonna make changes. Um, it's gone out for public comments, uh, three periods and that's because um, each time the public gave us great suggestions, um, and further changes that the Committee of Bar Examiners felt were reasonable and wanted to make changes to the um, rules. And so each time the Committee of Bar Examiners made a change to the rule, we went out for another public comment, so people can comment on the changes. So it has been a year in process um, and it has gone out for three public comments.
Thank you. Could you say a little bit more about the stakeholder meetings, like who, you know, what does that mean? Help me out.
Absolutely. So we um, sent invitations to all of our bar exam applicants uh, that have previously um, requested testing accommodations. We sent the invitation out to the disability rights associations. Um, and really we were looking for feedback. Um, the initial one in two thousand and twenty-two was a framework of where the state bar thought the testing accommodations should add. Um, and um, as I mentioned, applicants that have previously applied or currently were applying for um, testing accommodations spoke up on their um, situations and experiences that they've had along the way. Disability rights organizations gave us some great language that we incorporated into the rules. Um, the first forum was five hours long. And it was a good um, chunk of people making comments the entire time. The second um, public comment was four hours long and we had some of the similar um, people coming in to make comments, um, but some new ones as well. And again, based on their feedback, we continued to broaden the scope of the automatic approval process. We um, extended the timelines that allows applicants to um, um, submit additional documentation in support of their request uh, and things like that. We've had committee members show up. I apologize that I did not invite the Board of Trustees. In hindsight now, um, I think maybe you all would have enjoyed it, but the Committee of Bar Examiners did attend as well and they gave their feedback and, and really um, agreed to this proposal because they thought we were including a lot of the feedback from the public.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for that follow-up. All right, any other questions or comments? All right. If not, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
All right, first by trustee Good.
Jose, I'll second.
No, no, it was trustee user.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Oh, sorry.
All right, uh, sorry, first by trustee Hughes, or second by uh, vice chair Cisneros. My apologies. All right, can I have a roll call, please?
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present, Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
User?
Aye.
Shelby, not present, Soel?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, I wanna extend a heartfelt thanks to all the staff who worked on this proposal and to all of uh, the members of the public who gave their valuable input uh, through this process. So we thank you and um, thank you to everybody who has uh, yeah, just contributed to this uh, this final product. All right, moving on to we're gonna, well, just as an update, seven oh four, uh, which is the uh, Jenny item that is going to be moved uh, due to scheduling issues to tomorrow morning at approximately nine AM. Uh, we will now move to seven zero five, which is proposed amendments to rules procedure regarding probation. And this is a request to circulate for public comment and we are joined by Melanie Lawrence, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon, thank you. This item request that the committee send out for sixty-day public comment period proposed changes to the rule of procedure that governs probation. The proposed changes will officially change the name of the office to the Office of Case Management and Supervision. It's a name that we've been using internally for the past few years. It will also refine the purpose of the work of the office to focus on the purposes of discipline and the goal of reducing recidivism. It will eliminate the role of a probation monitor referee. This is a role that has not been in existence in the office for well over ten years. And importantly, it provides a framework for the confidentiality of the compliance monitoring work of the office and consistent with reforms that we've been making related to how we supervise attorneys on probation. It provides a framework for confidentiality of information collected to inform individual supervision strategies and information that we want to collect to study factors that may influence recidivism. That information is going to be used to research what factors most significantly impact recidivism so that we can further develop supervision strategies more generally for the future. Now, we recognize that some of this information may be sensitive and so we wanted to lay out a framework uh, to give attorneys on probation confidence that the information that we're asking them to provide voluntarily will be confidential and clarifying when and how it could be disclosed. We did share earlier drafts of the proposal with the State Bar Court and with the Office of Chief Trial Counsel and the Association of Disciplinary Defense Council. And to the extent that we received feedback, we did incorporate it in further drafting of the proposal. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments?
I just wanna make a comment that you heard earlier today, you mean spoke about recidivism. You hear um, Melanie briefly talking about the rules relationship, the relationship of this rule proposal to how we are revamping probation. I so look forward, and I'm sure it will make her laugh, but um, too, when we fully implemented all of these very exciting changes and we get to provide the board with an update, not just on what we're planning, but on what we've done and when we begin to see the impact on uh, recidivism, because that's really the ultimate goal.
Absolutely. I would echo that as having a front row seat through the ASAR project with uh, former trustee Broughton, uh, certainly a lot of exciting things uh, were talked about and yeah, as it gets rolled out, I think that uh, that the Board of Trustees will also get swept up in that enthusiasm. So Melanie, thank you for your, your work on this. Any other comments or questions? All right, can I have the um, resolution put up on the screen? All right, so to release this for public comment, period of sixty days. Can I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Yeah, first by trustee Soel, I will add a second. And if I could have a roll call, vote please.
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Cisneros? I'm sorry, Chen. I apologize. Chen, not present, Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
User?
Aye.
Shelby, not present, Soel?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, thank you, Ms. Lawrence. All right, next we have item seven zero six, which is the proposed amendments to state bar rules regarding pro bono practice program. And this is a request to circulate for public comment. We have uh, Ms. Hom and what else do we have presenting? And then Ms. McRae, welcome. Oh, Elizabeth, I think you're unmuted.
Okay, thank you so much, uh, Chair Stallings, um, and hello trustees. My name is Elizabeth Hom. I'm a program director in the State Bar's Office of Access and Inclusion. Here today with um, lead program analyst Danielle McRae to request a forty-five day public comment period for proposed amendments to the State Bar rules related to the pro bono practice program. Um, the amendments to these rules would support goal two of the State Bar strategic plan to protect the public by enhancing access to and inclusion in the legal system. Um, this falls under the effectiveness strategy to increase representation through existing regulatory and oversight authority, including pro bono practice programs, uh, by incentivizing and supporting licensees and law firms and to increase the number of pro bono legal services provided to underserved Californians. Um, so our current pro bono practice program allows attorneys who would otherwise be inactive to maintain an active license with their fees waived if they provide free legal assistance with select legal aid providers, including State Bar IOTA-funded legal aid um, grantees, um, the no fee or pro bono panel of a certified lawyer referral service or a court-based self-help center. Current rules require that attorneys be in good standing, have no record of discipline, be admitted to practice for at least three years and have practiced law or served as a judge in California for at least three of the last five years. Um, I'll turn it over now to Danielle, who will present on the goals of the proposed amendments as well as walk through um, our specific uh, proposals.
Thanks, Elizabeth. So as Elizabeth mentioned, in support of State Bar strategic plan goals to increase pro bono services in California, the proposed revisions include changes that aim to increase attorneys' access to the program and thereby increase access to justice for low and moderate income Californians, increase legal aid organizations' access to the program. Uh, and then to have better data on and a better understanding of the program and its impact, revisions also include requiring the reporting of pro bono hours provided through the program. And finally, in an effort to have the State Bar rules more accurately reflect office practice, there are several minor revisions related to uh, program administrative processes. So first, um, to allow a larger number of attorneys the opportunity to participate in the program, the proposed revisions would remove tur- two uh, current requirements that an attorney be licensed for at least three years and then an attorney have practiced law or served as a judge in three of the prior five years. Such requirements, um, particularly the second one here, were relatively uncommon when we looked at other states' pro bono practice programs. In an effort to expand legal aid organizations' access to the program while still prioritizing client protection, the revisions also include allowing attorneys to volunteer with any nonprofit, not just those IOTA grantees, lawyer referral services and self-help support centers. That uh, any nonprofit that provides free legal services to indigent and disadvantaged Californians and annually provides the following materials to the State Bar for review. So that includes their mission statement, an active certificate of status from the California Secretary of State as a nonprofit corporation, the organization's retainer agreement, a list of their California licensed attorneys and proof of malpractice insurance. These materials were identified in part by assessing what materials other states' pro bono practice programs evaluate and also what materials the State Bar currently requires of its IOTA grantees, so our QLSPs and support centers that are currently eligible to participate in this program. The revisions also include a new requirement for legal services providers in the program. Um, that would require them to report the number of pro bono legal services hours provided by their program attorneys. Currently, the State Bar has no real visibility into the number of hours that are being provided through this program. Um, and the current rules require attorneys and the organization that they volunteer with to agree on a minimum number of hours that the attorney will provide. And it includes a recommended minimum of one hundred hours per year, but because the State Bar doesn't currently collect hours, we don't currently have a great sense of whether the actual hours provided are um, less than a hundred hours, around a hundred hours or more than a hundred hours per attorney per year. And then finally, there are a couple additional revisions that would clarify administrative processes related to the pro bono practice program and those include how and when uh, active license fees are waived for those attorneys that are participating in the program, who can waive pro bono practice program, uh, attorney eligibility requirements for good cause and then also when and how organizations submit and certify attorney applications to the program. So this is really cleaning up language, um, so that our office practices are more accurately captured in the State Bar rule language. Uh, so Elizabeth, as Elizabeth mentioned, the request here is that um, the rules be released for a forty-five day public comment period, after which the rules would then be brought back to the board with a request for approval of those revisions and of course, a conversation of any feedback uh, received by the public at that time. Um, and so at this point, we're happy to take any questions, um, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you so much. All right, trustee user.
I just had one question. Um, we had something about the um, nonprofit would have to carry malpractice insurance and just I would suggest during the comment period, you make sure that the malpractice insurers would allow the nonprofits to carry that for, you know, not currently licensed attorneys and if not, they could change that. But you don't want it to be a null set.
Thank you for that feedback.
Right, any other questions or comments? Yes, trustee Good.
I just wanted to thank Ms. Hom and uh, Danielle for putting together this presentation. It's always great to see you two show up at these meetings, so thank you.
Thank you.
Good to see you as well.
All right, I would echo that. Thanks. And if there's no other comments, could I have the resolution put up on the screen? All right, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
I guess that was trustee Good.
Second.
Second by trustee Buena Ventura. All right, may I have the roll call?
Buena Ventura?
Aye.
Chen, not present, Cisneros?
Aye.
Good?
Aye.
User?
Aye.
Shelby, not present, Soel?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Trejo?
Aye.
Stallings?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays, motion carries.
All right, thank you to those who are seeking to All right, thank you to those who are seeking to expand uh pro bono opportunities here in California. And again, would just uh encourage all attorneys listening to uh continue to uh build into your community um to uh strengthen um the weakest member of of your uh community and I know that there's a lot of really good work going on um all over California, so we get to highlight some of that. Um and this, I think, is an important step to continuing uh to encourage a much-needed pro bono activity. Moving on to our next item, this is item seven zero seven. This is approval of exception to CalPERS one hundred and eighty day wait period. And we're gonna be joined by Office of General Counsel. And Ms. uh welcome.
Uh good afternoon, everyone. I am Jean Chriselnikoff. I'm an Assistant General Counsel with the State Bar's Office of General Counsel. Um this will be a very brief presentation. Um today we are seeking an uh the board approval of an exception to the CalPERS one hundred and eighty day waiting period um to appoint Linda Nitter as a retired and new attendant. Um Ms. Nitter is planning on retiring at the end of the year, um and she has been a long-term state bar employee and has extraordinary knowledge of the annual uh uh excuse me, fee bill um process. And she will be retiring, and the bar is seeking to waive the one hundred and eighty days that is normally required under CalPERS rules to allow her to come back immediately to assist us with the billing process, which will be in progress um at the time that she retires. Um so unless anybody has any questions, I turn it right back to you.
Any questions, comments? All right, I've seen none. If I could have the resolution put up on the screen.
So moved. I'll second.
All right, first by trustee Tony, second by trustee So well, could I have the roll call, please?
Buena Ventura.
Hi.
Chen, not present. Cisneros.
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
User.
Hi.
Shelby, not present. So well.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Trejo.
Oh, trustee, your uh microphone's muted.
Sorry, hi.
You do. Stallings.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero names, motion carries.
All right, thank you. Seven oh eight, approval of quarter three, twenty twenty-three financial statements and investment report. Joined by Mr. Uwart. And Coco Zhang. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Stallings. Um I will now share my screen for the presentation on the Q three financial statements. I made this presentation to the Finance Committee ear- earlier, so I will try and just highlight it. Uh can everyone see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um some of the revenue highlights, the general fund was higher um by about two point three million dollars. One point one million of that was made up of mandatory fees and client trust account protection program compliance fees. The other amount was made up through pass-throughs that we pass that uh insurance money through to the Affinity and California Lawyers Association. The Legal Services Trust Fund had the most significant increase in revenue, and this is due to the IOTA revenue. We anticipated uh average daily balances from the top ten banks of being about one point seven billion, when actuality it was four point eight billion, which is an increase of one hundred and eighty-two percent. We also anticipated the interest rate to be one point eight seven percent, and it was actually three point five percent. Um so we amended the budget in July to one hundred and six million. As you you can see, it's one hundred and seventeen million through quarter three, so we will continue to monitor this, but this is a good thing for the legal services community. The admissions fund um hasn't really changed quarter for quarter. Uh the increase is due to more applicants taking the bar exams in February and in July. And then there is also a slight increase due to moral character processing because of those increased applicants. Um the other funds were slightly higher due to side prey donation, which is uh comes from when there are class action lawsuits or other court cases, and certain residual funds cannot be distributed, they are donated, and so the Justice Gap Fund received that donation this year. Uh it towards expenses, the general fund was slightly higher due to building operations uh related to elevator and generators, and it was offset by the timing of some professional services payments to the state auditor for audit this year. Um the Equal Access Fund and Legal Services Trust Funds were slightly above budget due to the timing of when those expenses were incurred. Uh this is just a timing issue and will resolve itself um in the fourth quarter. The admissions fund um was under budget by about six hundred thousand dollars, and this was largely due to delays in invoice processing for the July bar exam and some professional services spending. And then finally, the Client Securities Fund was slightly under budget due to less payouts than anticipated. They have actually increased payouts over the last um part of the year, but they've also received more reimbursements than budgeted, which kind of offsets those increased payouts. So I will stop sharing now and answer any questions before I turn it over to Coco Zen for the investment report.
All right, any comments or questions for Mr. Uwart? Okay. All right, go ahead to the next portion, please.
Oh, hi. Good afternoon, trustees. Um I'm Coco Sam, the controller from the Office of Finance. Um for the quarter three uh investment report, I will just highlight a few items. Uh as of Q three, the state bar's investment market value has increased it to two hundred twenty-two point five million with an average like quarterly um rate of return of like four point one nine percent for the whole investment portfolio. The state bar has been receiving good returns on the investment in twenty twenty-three and ended with a three point four million investment gain at the end of the Q three. So the increase and of market value or the game uh were um caused by um the increase of a larger uh investment portfolio and uh the higher rate of return. Um with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
All right, any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we do have a resolution. So on the screen. May I have a motion?
So moved. I'll second.
First by trustee Tony, second by trustee So well, I have a roll call vote.
Buena Ventura.
Hi.
Chen, not present. Cisneros.
Hi.
Good.
Hi.
User.
Hi.
Shelby, not present. So well.
Hi.
Tony.
Hi.
Trejo.
Hi.
Stallings.
Hi.
Eight eyes, zero names, motion carries.
All right, thank you. All right, so that concludes today's open uh session items. We're going to um recess into, well, we'll adjourn into closed session. My anticipation is we'll come out of closed session um probably around five twenty to five thirty. And then we will uh recess for the day, and we'll start back tomorrow at I believe it's nine AM with the Jenny item and then also with the item pull off consent fifty dash ten. So trustees, you should receive a a link for the closed session. So go ahead and click on that. We'll see you on the other side.
Okay, recording.
All right, this is Brandon Stallings, Chair of the Board of Trustees. Uh prior to going into closed session, I neglected to uh mention the uh government code sections that pertain to our various closed session items. So the Board of Trustees will be convening into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section one 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 two six sub C sub seven and one 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 two six sub E sub two sub A. And again, anticipate coming out of closed session at approximately five twenty to five thirty. Thank you. All right, welcome back to the November edition of the Board of Trustees Meeting. Uh this is the full board. Uh we have adjourned out of closed session, and we were going to recess for the day. There are no reportable actions. And also, I wanted to reiterate the government code sections that we uh that were used in regards to the closed session. That's Government Code Section one 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 two six sub C sub seven and sub E sub two sub A. So we will see you all bright and early at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. Have a great evening.